In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any veterans in the audience if you remain standing, we recognize. Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Mr. Manager, I think there is one addition to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Chairman George, I would like to add one item to the consent agenda. It is going to be item 8.9. It's going to be a request to reclassify the solid waste coordinator position to solid waste superintendent.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
Motion to approve the agenda with item 8.9 added to reclassify solid waste coordinator position.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, board members. We have a public hearing tonight. Henry, a public hearing for local match for funding of the 5311 administrative grant and combined capital grant and approval to transfer funds from RAP allocation to 5310 funding grant. So we are in, under that public hearing, is there any signups or anyone to speak to that?
Chairman George, no one has signed up.
Is there any, the material was sent, is there any questions for the board or if you just want to briefly tell the public what, what the grant's for?
The grant is for our public transportation, to transport citizens across the county or into generally New Hennepin County for medical treatment. Often it's dialysis and those types of needs. It's to purchase two new vehicles as well as for our administrative match. That'd be for the next fiscal year.
Any questions, board members?
What's the timeline on this matching grant?
It's for the 25-year, right now, NC DOT where we purchase our vehicles are running about a year and a half behind. So it could be probably another year and a half before you actually receive those.
Those vans, they have to rack up some miles. I see them all over the place.
Hundreds of miles a day.
Yeah. There's no other comments or questions? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's further in, it's in the consent agenda. Public information, recognizing Jamie Flowers and Candace Brewer. President Morton, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate the invitation. I'm glad to be here. Just to recognize two of our students. And actually, it's unusual because mother and daughter, and they graduated at the same time. We recognized the other day at the commencement. And first, I can introduce the mother of the team, who is Jamie Flowers, who earned her diploma in pharmacy technology. Jamie initially started the pharmacy technology program in 2003, but paused her education to take care of young kids and help them grow up. But persistence pays off, and here she is today, in 2024, finishing that program. She hopes to secure a position in an inpatient facility where she can fulfill her passion for assistant pharmacist in providing patient care. In addition, her daughter here is as well. Candace Brewer earned her diploma in aesthetics, graduated from Pender High six months early, which is accomplishment, and was drawn to CFCC aesthetics program due to her deep interest in the connection between exterior appearance and mental health, well-being. Upon passing her state certification, she hopes to work in a salon where she can immerse herself in the learning about the field. Her ultimate goal is to start her own business. But in addition to that, Candace also received the President's Award, which meant she had an overall GPA of 4.0. So it's impressive. Both were born and raised here in Pender County and currently reside in Atkinson, and both chose Cape Fear because of proximity to home, affordability, and overall reputation. But what they don't realize is that when we have commencement, we typically give out, basically a letter and a portfolio, a folder, and later, of course, we have some new students, we mail them. But I have the originals here tonight for you, so you don't have to wait for them in the mail, okay? So if you would, you could come up. Let's do Jamie first. And then also, for Candace, we have her diploma, but also certificate for the President's Award.
Don't stand up here or behind or in front of the, congratulations. Thank you both. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If I can, I have your attention. I just want to mention a couple of things I looked at this morning. Overall, we were up in our attendance last year in enrollment by 6%, but actually in Pender County, our curriculum side, we increased by over 13% this year over last year. And on the con ed side, continuing education, we're up 18 and 1/2%. This shows that we really are pushing hard in Pender County to increase the attendance. And if you recall, you know, a couple of years ago, we bought two buildings over here in Bregal, and now we've received $4 million to go toward the expansion of Surf City, pretty much duplicate the space we have there to add another 10,000 square feet. And so we continue to do what we can here in Pender County. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. 6.2 Annual Update from Wallace-Pender Airport. Mr. Jones?
Good afternoon, board members. My name's Ben Jones. I'm the manager of Wallace-Pender Airport, and we're happy to be here for annual update. And here's our presentation here. Is this the clicker?
Yes.
Okay. So before I begin, we have officially changed the name to, from Henderson Field Airport to Wallace-Pender Airport. And it's a very exciting partnership we've got going. We love, we appreciate all your support throughout the year and from the years past. What we also need is even the radio calls are now for proper radio calls, Wallace-Pender Airport. So pilots hear that Pender County across the radio. And of course, Mr. Fred McCoy is one of our advisory council members, so it's good to see you.
A lot of people don't realize that's in Pender County, Wallace Airport.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So here's a little overview of the airport. Our identifier is Alpha Charlie Zulu. Right now, the runway is 4,150 feet. We have 100 low lead avgas, and we have Jet A. We have a crew car for pilots to use. We've had several pilots that'll fly in across the state, other states. They'll use the crew car to go to Bregal. They'll use the crew car to go to, into town of Wallace to do other various business activities. We have tie-down and ramp space, storage places for planes to park, for transient planes, and also stationary planes. Right now, we have 14 hangars there, and we have an on-field maintenance facility that's privately run there as well. That's aircraft maintenance. Our clientele will get business jets that come from all the way from Austin, Texas, to look at new business opportunities. And then we also, of course, they'll have House of Rayford come in to fly in their, check on their farms. And we also have a lot of small two-seater, four-seater airplanes, and these are families traveling across the country, or they're for use for recreational or flight training purposes. And here's our meet the crew. That's me. My name's Ben Jones. There on the right, I've got David Powell. He's in the middle. He's a part-time employee. And I've got Anthony Rosso on the left. He's also a part-time employee. And as you can see, as the years trend, we're getting busier and busier. 2023 fiscal year, we were just right at the 6,000 operations mark. This year, we broke the 7,000 operation mark. And I have printouts if you would like to see them later after my presentation. So the biggest reason we're here today, not only just for the yearly update, all these projects that we've been talking about is, it's finally coming together. It's finally happened. The grant money has been awarded, and the bids are in, and the road relocation project will be starting between November and December. And as you can see, Old Bill Road and Wallace Airport Road will be rerouted, and the old road will be reclaimed, and the runway will be extended to 5,500 feet. And this is so important because more private jets and also more flow of customers will be coming to the area, spending money in Pender County. And also, the land around it can be developed for aviation purposes, bringing in a lot more jobs to the, to the community. And here's a closer look at the map, as you can see. And this has been on the wall of the, of the FBO terminal for several years now, and it's been at least a five-year project, getting the DOT approved and the grant money. So look for changes around the Rockfish area of, of Pender County, right there around the airport. The second project we have, which is happening even sooner, it's going to be the runway rehab and lighting program. We're going to be rehabbing the existing runway that we have now, getting it ready to extend in possibly two years from now. And it's all Department of Aviation grant funded through the DOT, and it's going to mill out the old existing runway, and we're getting new LED lights, which are better for the pilots to see at night. They also use less electricity, and they also have a much longer life on those individual lights. And of course, the project will also be prepping for the runway extension, and that'll be early September 2024. So now I'm thinking that's going to be more end of later September 2024, and this grant money has been already awarded, and Fred Smith Company got the bid for this individual project. Barn Hill got the bid for the road relocation project. So now, as we're expanding, looking to the future, here is the map that shows you the total Phase One project. The, the new Phase One project will have, will have a parallel taxiway. Now pilots have to land and back taxi to get to the ramp. We'll have an actual parallel taxiway. The new improvements there are in the purple. We'll also have a new FBO terminal building, 10-acre ramp, which is in orange, and the plan is to build corporate and general aviation T-hangers. And as this airport grows, the economic impacts for Pender County, I would say it was going to explode for this community because we're going to have so much more offer for larger companies to move to Pender County because they look how close their company or their farm is based to a large general aviation airport. I didn't want. And here's a larger map of the project of, this is Phase One, Phase, the end of Phase One, this is after the road has been realigned. The earliest for this, the road has to be done first, and that's a 365-day project just for the road. So next year, that should be finished. The Phase One project is two to three years out in the time window for the runway extension and the parallel runway. And just a quick conclusion, we, we love serving our community. We have the Young Eagles Boy Scouts. They fly children from the age of seven to 17, three times a year at the airport, and it's a free airplane ride for children, and they can get their aviation badge, the Boy Scouts. And it's not just boys, it's boys and girls in that age. And it's a free airplane ride. All they have to do is sign up in advance through our, the, the Young Eagles program, and they can find that by calling the airport, or also the EAA chapter here in Bregal at SAG Air Park. They also partnership with us there as well. The MCLAD Leadership Academy also hosts a, a ground school for children interested in learning aviation jobs, and they come three times a year, and we host a, a class with the kids about different job opportunities in the world of aviation. And we're also connecting Pender County to the future. We're growing and seeing what other benefits and other opportunities we can bring to this area. And I invite each and every one of you, if you have any questions, please do come by. Wallace-Pender Airport will give you a tour, and you can get in depth of more of the projects that are upcoming to come. And if there's, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
If you're in Wallace, they're going to run a order in sewer line out there.
That is, that's the plan. That's in the works, right?
There, there is money in there for a, a Warren Will.
Yeah.
Grant money that we got to go to drill out there.
And probably sewer would be a big asset in sewer line. That should be a big name changer, get that runway to 5,500 feet.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones, thank you for the, the update on, on that's wonderful to know that, that the airport's partnering with, with local communities, especially the Young Eagles and Mount Calvary. That's a great program.
Yes, sir. It really is.
And that's what it's about, the youth.
Yes, sir. We had our, we had our 70th anniversary flying this year, too, back in June 15th, and we had over 200 precipice. So that was very exciting as well.
Awesome. It's great.
So anytime you have any questions, just please come on by and visit us. And we really appreciate the support and growing aviation in this community.
We appreciate it for Pender County. And welcome, Mr. Manager, Mr. Rob Taylor, Wallace Town Manager there. Any other questions, comments? We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
6.3 Fall Veterans Services Update, Ms. Leach?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give some updates for late summer, early fall, things that are happening in our office, in our community for veterans. So we do have the 9/11 Coffee and Breakfast for Veterans. That's going to be held at 9 o'clock at the Hampstead Library, completely free. We do ask, because there's limited availability, to just contact myself to RSVP. There's also the monthly Bregal Veteran Social that we're going to be doing at the Old Carolina Eatery. This month, it is this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00, also free for veterans and their families to come join and come out and see us. We will be hosting assist training, which is Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training on November 6th and 7th. That's going to be at the Hampstead Library, again, completely free, not just for veterans, can be for law enforcement, anyone who's interested in attending. It can be used towards certain accreditations and CEUs, depending on the field you work in. Again, just please contact myself so I can save a spot for you because there's limited availability. The Marine Corps League is going to be having their annual barbecue fundraiser at the Hampstead Annex. Going to be $12 per plate. That's going to be on October 12th. You can contact, again, myself or any of our staff if you wanted to buy a ticket in advance, or you can buy them right there that day. Operation Green Light's coming up again. You'll see me again next month to talk more in depth on that, but that's going to be observance in October, but then the reflection of the lights from the 4th through the 11th at the county buildings. There's going to be a virtual town hall coming up soon for the VHA for veterans to attend. We're also working with them to try to get one in person here in Pender County, so in the works. No dates have been set yet. And here's just a little update that we got from the Veterans Benefit Administration the other day. The biggest thing to highlight in this is that they have surpassed 2 million claims processed so far this fiscal year 2024, and the average grant rate was 64.6%, with, with the average disability rating being around 70%. And then there's our contact information.
We thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Appreciate what you do. You help me a lot, too, all the veterans, and we really appreciate.
Thank you. Good to see you out last time at the coffee, too.
Yeah.
I like that. It gives, gives veterans a place to go, to socialize. I would like to see more of that, as I think it would be helpful for members of the community, whether it's a county-sponsored event or not. And Carolina Eatery is very good to sponsor that for our local vets. I want to shout out to them.
They've been amazing. And, and we bring, we try to bring in a different speaker each time, so it's not the same thing over and over again. Again, no pressure to, you know, towards claims or anything with our office. It just allows them to meet other veterans that they may not have been able to connect with, as well as see what resources are available to them.
Let them network.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
6.4 Imagine Pender 2050 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Community Engagement Events.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Moran. I'm the long-range planner for the county, and we're very excited to be moving forward with the Imagine Pender Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's a new comprehensive land use plan for the county, which is, has a lot of impacts on the county over the next few decades. So it's a, we need everyone kind of giving their feedback, and that's one of the things I wanted to share with you all today, as well as a very brief update. We had our second Steering Committee meeting back on July 29th. We're working with our consultants, Clarion Associates, and, you know, kind of started talking about the, the survey questions, online survey that will be coming out, which will tentatively be available on September 17th through October 22nd. So it's not 100%, but I think that's what we're, we're going for, and that's the tentative date for the online survey. A couple of documents are being, you know, kind of solidified by our, our consultants, a community policy profile, which kind of just looks at all the different plans and ordinances and everything that kind of guides the county and policies and ordinances, as well as a community fact book, which is a lot of, you know, great background information that will be kind of an appendix to the, the finished plan. There is, I want to tell everyone as well, there is a website specifically for this. Please go check out the new county website in general that we got this summer, but also pendercountync.gov/imagine to go find out all the, the different updates and, and things that are happening with the plan, as well as an email address specifically for the plan. It's imagine@pendercountync.gov. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me through that means. Also, very specifically, want to talk about the community engagement window. I already mentioned the, the online survey that's supposed to be coming out on September 17th, but we have a, I don't know, we could call it a road show. We have a 10 different events. We're going to be around the county, you know, letting folks know about the comprehensive plan, but really seeking that feedback from members of the public. So we have, starting September 17th and 18th, there's two events per day, and then after that, we're going to calm it down a little bit and do one event per day over the course of three weeks. Not every single day, but you see the dates there on the board. And I wanted to let everyone know, here, there's these little pieces of paper. I'm sorry if it's very small. I can print you bigger ones. They're out on the table out there. Please take them or talk to me, and I can get you a bigger printed copy. These are events that we're going to have, where everyone will be able to come to these different locations and learn about the comprehensive plan, why it's important, and also offer your feedback on growth, development, all the different things that, that everyone, you know, has a lot of things to say about. And so these are the great opportunities we have coming up. Be happy to answer any questions, but just definitely wanted to share that with you all.
Any questions, board members?
I just appreciate you for, to putting these meetings together for the community. This is going to outline the growth for the years to come. Thank you for you and your team for doing that, giving everybody the opportunity, the citizens. You know, growth and development's on everybody's mind right now, and it's a good thing, a good way to get their input and give them some ownership. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So this is the first set. There'll be another set of community meetings that, towards the end, correct?
I'm sorry. I lost the PowerPoint.
There's another set of community meetings that'll happen after the plan's kind of started, right?
Yeah, after there, the consultant has drafted, the kind of first draft, there will be, should be, I think around April of next year, there'll be kind of a reveal or, you know, open house type of events where we get public feedback on the, the draft copy of the plan. Yes, sir.
So the, the early times, I'm kind of concerned about, is that you think you'll have much participation from 2 to 4 in the afternoon, on Wednesday afternoon?
We are very much going to try to get the word out on that, and kind of the reason we had that is our consultants are in town at, at that time for, for that particular day. Yes, sir.
So I just want everybody to have the opportunity. I mean, it covers from the coast to the cap to the country, and I don't want anybody left out because they can't make it to a 2:00 meeting in Atkinson. The majority of people in Atkinson don't work there. They work outside of, that was my only concern when I seen the schedule, that some of the time seemed early for people that, that work outside of those areas.
Yes, sir.
But I'm glad to see it's finally moving. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We thank you.
Thank you.
We are at, public comment. How many do we have?
We have six individuals signed up.
All right. So I'll read a little statement here. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board tonight, by the county manager, and the order in which the names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and the discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. Speakers are limited to three minutes. And so we're ready to go.
Harold Fields? Is there Harold Fields here?
There was two gentlemen that signed up early that, that left. I know, I don't know if they were the first two, but I do know two, two gentlemen signed up early.
James Wilson?
They were here to speak on the waste, ma, waste.
Yes, sir.
Treatment.
Okay, we'll go to the next person, Kim Meyer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Meyer, 102, Leslie Lane. I have a, a video. I guess it's about to go. I'm not sure if he's going to show it or not. This is actually Foy Plantation in Scottsville. That's going, now he's on a different one. Basically, what these videos will show is that Scottsville received a, a lot of water, as did every community, I'm sure in Pender County, the weekend after Debbie passed through. I have some photos from 4205 Scottsville Road. This is Herman and Susan, I'm sorry, Wolfgang and Herb, Wolfgang and Susan Herman's yard. They actually are at the 16-foot drop from 17 to Scottsville Loop Road, and they're receiving a lot of the sediment that's coming across from Blake Farms. This is actually their backyard, and I'll pass these around so y'all can see them, kind of rolling up on me right now. In addition to the developments that are at 17, Blake's Farm, we also have sweet grass that's coming through, and this is a flood map of what that area where sweet grass is going in looks like. And I also have the proposed housing that will be put in, 228 homes in that area. On this USB, I've got a drone video of that field and of Foy Plantation. There's also a video of Oakvale and a video of Foy Plantation, the one that's supposed to be showing. I also have more photos. This is a damaged drainage system, and I do want to thank Daniel Adams and Beth, I don't, I didn't meet her, so I'm not sure of her last name, for coming out to our area and looking at this drainage system where it's completely damaged and blocked off, and And Foy Plantation is receiving quite a bit of rainwater then from Scottsdale, and it's causing flooding in my yard and then in several other properties as well. There's drone footage as well on that. And then we have actually some of the field and the flooding in the field. The concerns here are damaged drains that have not been fixed, and we understand we have to work through the NC DOT. Our concern there is that we've contacted NC DOT and we don't get any response. So we'd really like to engage with the county and make sure that we get a response so that we can address those drains. And then the development, which the drone footage would show, we, they're, they're going to have three retention ponds, but what we'd also like to suggest is that they pump water and have filtration systems so that they can, you know, dump off into the Futch Creek into the intra-coastal. You know, we want to keep our waterways as clean as possible. Yeah, that's going to happen. This is the footage. And that's my yard, just the Black Lakes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next up, we have Ellen Gerganis. Welcome.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Ellen Gerganis, and I live at 202 La Salle Street in Scottsdale. My family's had property in Scottsdale since the early 70s, and I've been a homeowner since 1994. I'm coming to you today, like Kim, because we are very concerned about the storm water management issues in Oakvale and the other Scottsdale neighborhoods. We've all experienced floodings in recent years. We first flooded in Hurricane Floyd, 1999, where the data suggests there was 18 to 24 inches. Floyd was considered a 100-year flood. However, since then, my garage has flooded five times. We flooded in September 2016, April of 2017, July of 2018, Florence, Florence in September of 2018, we had 24 inches of water in the garage. With Hurricane Debbie, the backside of it, two weeks ago, we ended up with 12 inches of water in the garage. We had water that filled ditches and was rushing down the driveway and over our berms. I'm not sure which retention pond that came from, but I had minnows, not tadpoles, minnows swimming in my garage, closed garage. Clearly, there's something not operating correctly with the storm water management system. This last rain after Debbie left multiple neighborhoods flooded and residents without access to their driveways. They were either, cars were stuck in the driveways or stuck on the road. This is inconvenient for them, but it's also a safety concern as fire and rescue workers would be unable to reach these homes if there were a fire or medical emergency. So it's our understanding that the natural flow of water from Oakvale is through Foy Fields, where Kim's video just showed. The sweetwater development is planned to Futch Creek. Where will that water go when the topology changes? So Futch Creek is set up to drain, according to the research that I've seen, 3,813 acre watershed with 12.3% of impervious coverage. Please help us with the issues that Scottsdale residents are dealing with. And thank you for your time and attention to these storm water and future management problems.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I cannot read the individual's name, but the address is 330 Loppiett Street, addressing flooding.
Sorry, it's Amy Minnessis.
Okay. Thank you.
It wasn't planned, I'm speaking, but I'm here with my neighbors. I'm from Scottsdale, no, Oakvale. And I'm new to the county. We moved here last year, and we are concerned about flooding with Debbie. Our backyard flooded. Yes, it was only our backyard. We didn't have water in our garage. But our backyard also backs to the new sweetgrass development. So I can only imagine what will happen once the topology changes and we have water coming from sweetgrass into our backyard. It's not just our backyard, it's the whole community. Streets were flooded. I think there was a cul-de-sac that was flooded for days after Debbie. Let's see. We recently also, we just dug a hole in our backyard, and it's clay soil, so there was water, but two and a half feet, there was already water there. So I don't know what they're going to do with the development, but I think something needs to be done, just to drain this water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last individual that has signed up is Tommy Vatsen.
So we're going to pause the timer, just so, Tommy's giving the update for the county through the public information.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Three weeks ago today, EM staff started preparing for what was going to be possible storm in the tropics. On Saturday, August 3rd, a tropical storm Debbie has formed. On Sunday, the 4th, Debbie became a hurricane. And on Monday, Debbie made landfall at 5:00 a.m. near Big Bend, Florida, with winds of 80 mile an hour, a Cat 1 storm. On end of Tuesday, we continued to prepare for the storm, and on Wednesday, the U.S.C. was activated after a state of emergency was signed at 5:00 p.m. the day before. Two shelters were opened at Topsail and Cape Fear Elementary, with no wind coming in in the 24-hour period they were open. During Wednesday evening, the county received two tornadoes, one in Maple Hill around Highway 50 and 53, and also one on 421 at the Sampson County line. No injuries or major damage to any structures. And it continued to rain Wednesday into Thursday morning. Thursday evening, rainfall amounts in Holly Shelter were 3.29 inches. And areas of Long Creek and Curry Community received 11 inches. The EOC received 6.58 inches of rain, and the Hempstead Annex received 6.8 inches of rain. The Weather Service has been calling for 10 to 15. They had pushed it to 15 to 20, and we were spared with the dry air on the backside of Debbie, which in the next coming days, as you all know, we saw rain. Saturday, we knew both the northeast Cape Fear River and the Black River would go to major flood stage. NC DOT closed Highway 53 between Maple Hill and Ergal around 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. The U.S.C. knew this was going to be a potential threat to the county, so we went to a minimum activation on Saturday afternoon and through Saturday night. Sunday morning, the U.S.C. was in fully operational status at 8:00 a.m. and went to 24 operations until Friday at 5:00 p.m. Also on Sunday, a Swiftwater Rescue Team from Buncombe County Task Force 2 arrived here in the county to assist us. And on Monday, that team was demoved and Task Force 9 out of Fayetteville arrived to backfill that team. Tuesday, the northeast Cape Fear River crested at NC Highway 53 at 16.51 feet, 16.51 feet, that's just over major flood stage at 16 feet. The Black River crested on Wednesday at 11.7 feet around 8:40 a.m. Due to the continuous flash flooding we had Wednesday, Thursday, in Scottsdale, we went into Scottsdale on Friday morning, evaluated some of it, took pictures. And then the continued flash flooding Friday and Saturday, and then the Sunday in Ag Kinston, Ergal, Maple Hill added to the rainfall amounts. And after a six-day total, rainfall amounts in Pender County averaged nine to 20 inches, which was back to the original forecast of the National Weather Service. Just some little food for thought, water rescue crews contacted 120 homes in the flooded areas where people were sheltering place in the floodwaters. Also, 10 people were evacuated by Swiftwater Rescue Teams to higher ground, and 18 water rescue calls for people stranded in their vehicles. And every one of them was a case where they drove around a barricade.
What, where were, where were the 10 residential rescues?
They were scattered out, some on the Black River, some on the northeast Cape Fear River. And I do not know the exact location of all 10.
So they were trying to drive through that border?
We had 13 people removed from vehicles that attempted to drive through flooded roads that DOT had closed. During the six-day period, the 911 Center received 80 calls for weather-related events, and the Emergency Management App did 44 push notifications, either by our office or by automatic weather notifications. Just a little rundown, supporting agencies, the Pender County elected officials, each one of y'all had reached out, some of you stopped by, and that was appreciated. All the county employees, the sheriff's office, the Pender County 911 Center, all the local PDs, all the fire departments across the county, Pender Fire and EMS, Pender County Schools, Steve Path and the National Weather Service Team in Wilmington, Buncombe County Task Force 2 Swiftwater Rescue Team, Fayetteville's Task Force Swiftwater Rescue Team, the North Carolina Forest Service, Brunswick County Emergency Management, Duplin County Emergency Management, North Carolina Emergency Management, Leland Fire, Stanley County 911, Hamlet Search and Rescue, the American Red Cross, North Carolina DOT, the Highway Patrol, and the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and many local businesses. And that's just a quick rundown on the storm. And we closed the state of emergency this afternoon. We rescinded that order at 4:00, and we're back in normal operations.
I have a question. By what authority, under what authority, do you put up those signs saying, "High water don't go through"? For the 13 individuals that you had to rescue out of their car, what was the signage that they went past?
They were all road closed signs that are all handled by North Carolina DOT, and then they handle it because it's their road, they close them. And even though a barricade may be moved out of the way, NC DOT has to go out and do a full road inspection, shoulder inspection, and if it crosses a bridge, they've had to go out and do bridge inspections prior to them having to open it up. And, but that's a Highway Patrol manner to enforce.
Yes, and is that being enforced?
Highway Patrol did their best attempts to keep people out there, but I don't think they had adequate staff in this, manned all the control points 24/7.
Would you consider that that signage is related to safety?
It is.
I don't know, Mr. County Attorney, but correct me if I'm wrong, violation of a safety statute is negligence per se?
I would definitely say so, yes.
And to date, we only had one injury throughout the entire storm and no deaths here in this county.
Did you receive any calls from any of the folks that saw fit to drive past the road closed signs?
Many of them called 911 for assistance, since we're for the rescue teams.
No, 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 before they went around the sign?
We did not.
And if I may expand briefly, the county does not have authority to close the roads. It would be either through the sheriff or DOT in conjunction with the Highway Patrol on doing that. So, I mean, the chairman enacted a state of emergency, but the statute was changed. The county, as the county, does not have authority to close roads.
My point is, while I sympathize with people having to get home, having to cook supper, having to get home from work, having to do, you know, when we're in a state of emergency, we know in this county, pretty much, like at my house, I know that there's a place on shallow road that's going to flood. I know it. So I just have to go another route. But I think that it would behoove people to make accommodations for these types of things, when they know we're going to be in a flooding situation, rather than putting their lives at risk. And thank you for having the staff to go out and the personnel to go out and do these rescues. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
And for keeping us advised.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're at consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, including 8.9? Which was the addition for the reclassification?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion for approval with the addition, 8.9?
The motions are second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. 9.1, resolution approving the county's application for grant funding through the WMPO for the design of multi-use path along Country Club Drive, Azalea Drive, Jenkins Road, and St. John's Church Road in Hampstead. Mr. Moore.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again. So I have the pleasure to be able to request a consideration of a couple of resolutions that the planning department is asking for. We're seeking grant funding from two different grants for the same project. And that project is a multi-use path that would run from the intersection of Country Club Drive and Slupe Point Loop Road, also intersecting with the existing multi-use path between Hampstead Kiwanis Park and North Topsail Elementary. It would run all the way up Country Club Drive to US 17, cross over US 17, and continue up Jenkins and North St. John's Church Road to the combined school campuses there at Topsail High School. Also, there would be a connector along Azalea Drive to the existing path that connects in, not quite at the intersection of Country Club Drive there. So that is the project that we're seeking to move forward with, with y'all's blessing. And this project came from a feasibility study. It's the East Coast Greenway, the NC 210 East Coast Greenway Feasibility Study, which was completed last year and adopted by the board earlier this year. We're seeking adoption or approval of two resolutions for those two grants. And the two grants, one is through the Wilmington Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's using federal monies for that. It's an 80/20 match, so 80% with those federal monies, 20% with a local match. Now, the exciting part is that we're also applying for a second grant through the State Parks and Recreation Division for, it's called the Great Trails State Program. And that would potentially, you know, if we got both those grants, that would cover the 20% that would remain from that 80% match. So I'd ask y'all support and see if y'all had any questions about those resolutions.
Are there any questions, comments?
And if we didn't get the second grant that you were speaking of, the 20% matching portion to the county, would be $168,000?
Yes, ma'am.
When would construction of this pathway take place?
Yes, ma'am. So that would be after, sorry, this is for the design phase, and it's projected that the design phase would last two years. And so there would, the county would need to seek more grant funding or find funding for the construction. So at least two years from now is when construction would start.
So we don't know how much this is going to cost? This is just the design phase?
Yes, ma'am. This is the design phase. The projected cost from the feasibility study is, for these sections, is $11 million, I believe.
And we don't know when construction would be? If the construction would be after completion of the bypass?
It would be at least two years out. The federal money requires that it be completed before 10 years. So there's a little bit of a window there. Yes, ma'am.
So these paths are crossing all over New Hanover County now, and a lot of those the DOT has come back and helped fund or funded part of them. So hopefully that is the intent here, that we'll get some of that. The multi-use path along Slupe Point Loop from Country Club to North Topsail was state-funded pathway. I think the only thing the county has had to do is take ownership of it as far as maintenance and cut the grass.
Yes, sir.
The area they're talking about putting this is... The area they're talking about putting this is a well-traveled area. It's very busy with people trying to ride bikes back and forth to the park and walking through the park and, and trying to get to the golf courses. And it would take some of the traffic off. And there's also a planned subdivision of eleven hundred homes that would, that attaches to this walking trail. So hopefully, you know, we can leverage some of that with the approval of that. That's where they, they get a portion of, of their three hundred and some acres there. They can front with some, help us pay for part of it under construction. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
I, I just wanna make a comment. This is, this is something that we had looked at with the bypass several years ago when this opportunity came up for funding for a sidewalk along that area, through that area. I'm, I'm just concerned about on its face. It's not very transparent or clear to me, the total cost of this project and with the other construction projects that we've got going on in this county and the uncertainty of when the bypass is gonna be completed. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned about it. Given that the design phase, if, if we have a second grant to cover the hundred and sixty-eight thousand, then it's gonna be a considerably lot more money for the actual construction. And again, it needs to happen. I understand that it needs to happen. But my concern with this is lack of transparency with regards to full cost of the project. And things change with regards to state funding. So that's, those are my comments.
That's what happened on the sidewalk, I think. Did they change their funding?
So the sidewalk, the multi-use pass on the sidewalk, that, that project has been funded from Washington Acres Drive, not just the sidewalk part of it, but the, the median project, which encompasses a multi-use trail on each side of Highway seventeen, has been funded, prioritized as the number one priority and funded.
With no matching.
With no matching.
With no matching.
Right, from the DOT starting in twenty thirty-one, which is supposed to be immediately after the bypass opens in twenty thirty.
So again, would it be prudent for us to wait and hope that DOT could then also fund this other section that will connect those?
I don't know that they would.
Without the uncertainty of the financing and the matching grants and the eleven million price tag that you had just referenced? Do, do you see what I'm saying?
I do, but I don't know that waiting is gonna offer that. As we've seen with the DHS H building and the, the law enforcement center and the school bond issue, the longer you wait, the more it costs. So yes, we could wait and, and two years and it's forty-four million dollars instead of eleven. I mean, that's just the way things have, has progressed here lately. And then I don't see any relief in, in sight for, for escalating construction costs. That, that's gonna have to be, I'm assuming there's gonna have to be right-of-way's purchased, the property values in that area that this would propose for. They're not coming down. They're, they're constantly increasing at a rapid, rapid pace. So I don't see that we would benefit by waiting, but that's just, I can't make a motion or, so that's just my opinion on the project.
But this tonight is not the eleven million dollars for construction?
No.
No, this is for the design phase.
And this is.
Which could impact us at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, sir?
Right?
That's twenty percent cost to the county.
Right.
If we don't get the second grant to cover our twenty percent on the first grant.
Gotcha.
Yeah, my concern is how much of a bill we're gonna be left with. I know it's really needed. The DOT, would they buy the right-of-way? The DOT would actually buy the right-of-way?
I, I'm not sure of how right-of-way acquisition, you know, goes down legally or, or that sort of thing. Maybe Mr. Thurman chime in on right-of-way acquisition? I'm not an expert on that, I'm sorry.
We got a lot on the back burner, I think, all these construction jobs, because I won't be here in a few months.
And neither will I, so maybe bring it back?
No, I don't agree with bringing it back. I mean, the reason the wards and some of the shape it's in now is because everything got put off till the new board got here. And now the new board that's here is having to pick up where the old board left off. I don't think it's fair for a new board to have to come in. If this is something that needs to be done now, it needs to be done now. It doesn't mean we kick down the road and then later. If it needs to be voted down now, it needs to be voted down now.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on that. And this is not a hill that I'm ready to down because it is something that would be beneficial to the community and helpful for traffic congestion. But again, the only thing I'm saying is my concern is the lack of transparency of the total cost of the project.
So I'm gonna call the question. Is there a motion to approve or? Hearing them, this is, this is go forward. Thank you, sir. Nine point two legislative goals and submissions of such goals to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for consideration?
Yes, sir, Chairman George. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners contacted us requesting we submit our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five legislative goal proposals. As part of the criteria for goals, there are two pieces of criteria. First, changes to statutes or requests for funding is one avenue to go. The other avenue to go is must have an impact on all hundred counties. We have compiled five priority goals to submit to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. They are as follows. Seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure broadband capability to the unserved and underserved areas and residents of the state. The second goal is seek additional revenue.
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, can we wait just a second till these people get out of here? It's a little distracting. Sorry, thank you.
I'll start the first goal again. Seek legislation, funding, and other efforts to expand digital infrastructure broadband capability to the unserved and underserved areas and residents of the state. The second goal is seek additional revenue sources, including a statewide wide bond referendum and expanded lottery proceeds, and changes to the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund to equitably address statewide public school and community college capital challenges. The third item is support legislation to allow counties to include specific language on the valid referendum designating how the proposed quarter cent local sales tax levy will be spent. The fourth goal is increase state funding and support legislation for behavioral health services and facilities, including dedicated resources for community paramedicine projects, inpatient crisis beds, substance use disorders, specialty courts, individuals' mental health issues in county jails, and single-stream funding for area authorities. And the last goal that is being proposed is oppose efforts to divert to the state fees or taxes currently allocated to the counties or to erode existing county revenue streams with unfunded mandates.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. Under item two, the paragraph appears to address statewide revenue sources, including bond referendums and lottery proceeds that would benefit the education system, community-based colleges and somewhat. And under, the subsections under that, the second one, reducing or eliminating local match requirement for Tier One and Tier Two counties. I think it would be important for us to address issues pertaining to Tier One and how Tier One and Tier Two counties are determined because whether you're a Tier One or a Tier Two county is, is very much a deciding factor as to what assistance our citizens are able to get and our local governments are able to acquire. I think that Tier One, Tier Two designation should be a, a standalone issue as it has been since I've been on the board for twenty sixteen for the lobbyists at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners to continue pushing for a more equitable and fair assessment of what constitutes a Tier One and Tier Two county for the purposes of, of funding, grant funding and things of that nature.
We can certainly break that out as a separate goal.
I agree. I think this, that committee started back, this was approved to start back reviewing that.
And I think it's very important that we join our, our fellow counties in emphasizing that as a concern.
Does the board have any additional feedback on these priorities?
I think otherwise they look good.
Well, we can plan on submitting these priorities and have the items reducing or limiting local match requirements for Tier One and Tier Two counties broken out as a separate goal.
Thank you, sir.
And there, the deadline is what, Friday?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve with the requested change?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Approval of resolution providing the final approval of terms and documents for the DHS, DHHS facility financing. Ms. Blue?
Good evening, Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm Meg Blue, Pender County Finance Director. For those of you who don't know, this is a follow-up item from the public hearing and the initial approval that we had at the last meeting. This is just the final approval of the form of the documents that are to be signed as part of this transaction, once approved by all the various agencies as necessary for the Department of Health and Human Services facility.
Is there any questions? I'm assuming that's why Mr. Jessup has joined us again tonight?
Yes, he wants to make sure we get it done, so I'll make a motion to approve. He's fidgeting.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
He also had to get a lot of John Hancock's before this meeting for the Law Enforcement Center, so we're moving right along with all the things.
And approval of a budget and contract amendment to purchase order increased for Bobbit for the construction of the DHS HS facility project?
Yes, so initially we approved, this is, this was done as a design-build project. Initially, Bobbit was awarded the design-build contract. Only the design portion has been contracted thus far. At this point, we'll increase it to include the GMP and increase the purchase order and make the necessary budget transfers, which is what the attached documentation does.
Is there any questions from Ms. Blue?
I have a question, Ms. Blue.
Sure.
Page two there, the site development, construction notes. So this is the new health department building?
Yes.
For the county of Pender and the citizens?
It's health and DSS.
And DSS.
Yes.
So it's, and that, and I'm good with that, and it's much needed. I just got a question, if it, it may be me. Permits and application fees, two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And then permit review comments, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's four hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars that the citizens are gonna pay to the citizens.
I can't speak specifically to which permits they are, but I think a lot of them are paid to, correct me if I'm wrong, DEQ and those kinds of permits, as well as the town of Burgau.
Okay.
We wouldn't, ours, it wouldn't be them paying Pender County for that permit.
So that, none of that will go to the county? Because that'd be like paying yourself.
Right, no, no.
Okay, so you, you're helping me.
Sorry.
When I see that, I'm like, turn it.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do believe that, sorry, Andy Sec with Bobbit is in the back and he's giving me a.
Between Burgau and the state, it's gonna be four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in permits and fees.
Okay.
Just wanted to get it out there.
Sure.
And it'll be the same when we build the Law Enforcement Center, because it's also the town of Burgau?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Discussion? There's no items on the discussion. Eleven point one, thank you, Ms. Blue.
Thank you, Ms. Blue.
Reappointment to Novant Pender Memorial Hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Jessup. Yes, sir.
Safe trip back.
Thank you for taking care of us.
All right, for item eleven point one, Denise Houghton and Myra McDuffie are both currently serving on the Novant Pender Memorial Hospital board. The chairwoman of that board reached out to me asking that we bring the appointments to the board before October. October is when their next meeting would be a reset for them. Ms. Denise Houghton is currently serving as District One's representative. She's applied for reappointment and is recommended by the chair of the hospital board to be reappointed. She has a longstanding history in the health field. She's experienced working in the regional health education consult for NC Department of Health and Human Services, the health promotions director for New Hanover County's Health Department, and the executive director of the American Cancer Society. Ms. Myra McDuffie is also currently serving as the District Five member. She's applied for appointment and is also recommended by their chair. She is the respiratory therapist at Downstate Medical Center. She's been the assistant director of the business, sorry, excuse me. Previously, she was the respiratory therapist at Downstate Medical Center, the assistant director of respiratory at Vanderbilt Skilled Nursing Facility, and she's now the owner of our local business, Memaw's. Chicken and ribs. She's served on numerous boards as well, such as the Burgau Tourism Development Authority and the Burgau Chamber of Commerce. For both of these applicants, their terms would begin January first, twenty twenty-five, and expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
I currently serve on this board. And Ms. Houghton and Ms. McDuffie both have been a asset and, and in fact are Pender County's designees. And I would recommend them for reappointment unequivocally. And I have a question for our manager. Did the chair of this board indicate to you that they had Novant designees that they wish to run by this board for reappointment as well?
I did receive an email regarding these two, two applicants.
Just these two?
Yes.
Okay, now these are the Pender designees. Did, was there any discussion about the Novant designees, members of the board?
I did not have any comments.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up with that. But I, I would recommend these two ladies be reappointed wholeheartedly.
A second? And a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, board members. There is nothing for the water districts, but I know Morse, Morse Creek has water and sewer. I suppose they have something there.
Yes, sir, I would appreciate if we can open the Morse Creek Water and Sewer District.
We are now opening as Morse Creek Water and Sewer District.
So my name is Anthony Colón, and I'm the executive director of Pender County Utilities. As you all know, we're working on a CDBG, which is a Community Development Block Grant for the installation of water lines in the four twenty-one corridors around the Columbia Union District. So my deputy director, Mr. James Broctor, and myself will be holding a public meeting at the Pender Lee School Auditorium to assist the citizens of Columbia Union around the Highway four twenty-one corridor to fill out an income survey form, which is a requirement for the Community Development Block Grant. This is the application that is due on September the thirtieth, so we're moving forward quite fast. Part of the requirement was the public hearings, which we already performed. Now we're doing the income survey. And on our next board meeting, I will have some forms for the chairman of the board to sign. And we'll have all this put together on a package. We'll send it out. And we'll, at the moment, we'll wait to see what this day will allow us to, to receive. The cap is three million dollars, and we're looking forward to get that money. So this meeting will be held this upcoming Monday. We will be at the Pender Lee.
Is that the twenty-sixth?
That is Monday. That is Monday, the 26th. Yes, ma'am. August, Monday, the 26th. Mr. James Proctor and myself, we're going to be at the Pender, Pender Lee School Auditorium from 12:00 PM till 7:00 PM, and that's for all the citizens in that area. Ms. Highfield, you can go ahead and tell everybody, and I will get with me Samantha Jones as well. I will also have, I have a list of everybody's telephone numbers, so we will be sending telephone calls on Wednesday, Friday, and once again, on Monday morning. We're trying to get as many as possible. Right now, I got about a list of 68 people that is willing and is ready for it, but then I would like to, if there's anyone else that they want to come in and also fill out, we will also receive any new applications as well. So that's all I have for now on that, and I look forward to see everyone out there.
So this is part of the process?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a necessary part of the process?
This is a requirement, yes.
This is a requirement for funding that we get these, this survey information?
That is correct.
So these folks, we all need to come in and, and give survey information.
Yes, ma'am.
How long will it take and how long could they expect to be there when they show up at any time between 12 noon and 7:00 PM next Monday?
We probably, we probably can get in between 15, 20 minutes filling out this form. It's, it's one single form and pretty much is asking for name, address, contact information, and income.
And income?
That's it.
Is that the extent of the financial information?
That is the extent.
That they will be required?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And so also, I understand that you have a robo-call system set up?
Yes, ma'am.
Tell us about that.
So, so in the last couple of public hearings, we've been collecting signatures with email addresses and telephone numbers, and we're adding that to our Nixon phone call system. And I will have my utilities analyst to set up that, to go out into effect Wednesday, Friday, and then once again on Monday morning.
And, and these robo-calls will be made specifically to the citizens in our, my neighborhood?
Correct.
That is impacted by this 421 water project?
Your name, your, your name and number is included as well?
I hope so.
Yes. That was all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
He was really detailed that day at the community meeting with them, letting them know that.
Yeah.
If we are out of that district, there is no other water health, social services, items from the county attorney.
Chairman, first, personal matter, I'd like to thank Kelly Sellers, the North Carolina Department of Transportation Incident Management, who parked behind me and made it safer for me, as well as all the people getting off 40 and to go to Rocky Point, when I will no longer try to replace my own tires, I'll go to somebody with an air wrench, because my tire completely came off. And so anyway, it was, that was a little exciting this afternoon that I didn't need. But anyway, Ms. So.
I'm glad you were here.
The Lord takes care of fools, and he took care of.
Well, I know that you're a fool, but I'm very glad he took care of you.
It was, again, because I was right at, I was not going fast, otherwise it would have been bad, because I mean, the tire completely came off.
Those are great people. They, they're good at their job.
I'm not. No, no, it was, it was good, and also Ms. Brain came and picked me up, so I could get here. But we would, for closed session, if the board is, would consider going into Item Three, Attorney/Client, and Item Four, Economic Development.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if you will entertain a motion to go into.
We gotta do the rest of the, around the block conversations. County Manager?
Yes, sir.
Assistant County Manager?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, I do have a couple of new employees that started today for our new, for our Pender County team. I'd like to introduce you to. I'd like to begin with Mr. Wyatt Richardson. If I could ask him to come to the podium, please, sir. Just to tell you a little bit about him, he is our new Director of Facilities and Fleet Services. He has a bachelor's degree in Parks and Recreation Management and associates in Automotive Systems Technology. He has 18 years of experience in local government related to facilities and ground maintenance, fleet management, and parks and recreation as well. He comes to us most recently from the town of Leland, and he was there for about six years. And also, he's worked with the city of Durham and Sarasota County, Florida, so we're really happy to have him onboard with us and expect great things from you, sir. No, no pressure.
Appreciate that.
Just kidding. We are glad to have you.
And I'm glad to be here. I wanted to thank you all for letting me join the team. Excited to add value to the organization and ready to get work on both our Fleet Department and some of our county facilities, as we have some aged and some new ones coming online as well. So excited to be a part of that. So, thank you all.
Welcome.
Well, thank you.
Now, I'd like to ask Mr. Dario Ramirez if he'll come forward. He is our new County Managers Office Project Manager, so we have plenty for him to help us with, with the capital of projects that are underway. He has 20 years of military service, where he has served in multiple project management capacities. He has a bachelor's from American Military University, and he's currently completing his project management professional certification, and he's also fluent in Spanish. So we're really grateful to have you onboard with us as well, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the, served the citizens of Pender County first and foremost. Moved here in 2019 on military orders, and I definitely plan to stay here for a long time.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Newton, Vice Chair Newton.
I have nothing.
Mr. McColl.
I'd just like to thank all the county employees and Tommy and everything they did for, during that storm recently, and y'all did an outstanding job. I appreciate you.
Mr. Commissioner Groves?
Yeah, a couple of small things. Out of the ROP meeting, they're going to do extensive work on 117 from Porter's Lane to Walker Street, and that's pretty exciting to get that project started. And a couple of little things here from a citizen. I feel like the $40 dumping sticker is way too high, and I also feel like 40 is kind of high. I'd like to see that took down to 20 if they need an extra sticker, if we could look at that anyway. And I had several opportunities to stop by the EOC. I want to thank Tommy for his hard work that he did during the storm. It, it was stressful for a lot of people. And, and to add to that, exempting emergency vehicles, I feel like if we're in a state of emergency, we should limit river activity, because these boats are causing more harm than the regular storm. They're tearing up the banks, and of course, y'all know I live on the river, and I had a chance to look at some of it today as the water was low enough to look. And I, I feel like, Mr. Manager, if you could kind of open that door and see if we could do something to recreational vehicles during state of emergency during a flood. And that's about all I have.
Mr. Burton?
Yeah, real quick, just a couple of things. I just want to reiterate and thank the citizens that have contacted and called me that live in the low-line areas, especially around Scottsdale, around my neighborhood. My wife and I have been there for 25 years, and my wife since 1979, so we're very aware of, of those areas, and my heart goes out to, to those citizens. And hopefully, as we work forward, the developers will come under new stormwater regulations that will hopefully help mitigate some of that moving forward. And I'm glad the new plan is, is coming out with a lot of public input. Secondly, I had a chance to be welcomed to the Tourism Board last week for their meeting, my first time there, and a great, great team, great group of folks, had some good discussions. We're happy to get the additional 3%, what, occupancy tax, and that's coming, and look forward to, to helping on behalf of the Board and the citizens to, to afford that. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. So I just have a few things. I do want to thank Emergency Management Office and the staff, all the staff that was there, not just Emergency Management. There was, the times I went in there was everybody from Fire EMS, Sheriff Department, Fire Marshal's Office, Department of Social Services. Wes was in there on Sunday afternoon hanging out when you didn't need, have to be. His shift hadn't even started yet. So it takes a lot of different people, a lot of different skills to man that center, and I appreciate every one of you. You all made a difference in somebody's part during this, this event. Luckily for us, you know, it was, it wasn't as bad as they predicted, thank God, and let's hope that we're done for the year, so we can close that out. Out on the table, also out where the public comment, comment, signups are, there is a paper with a QR code for the transportation plan, where they're seeking input for your, wants your input on how to route the transportation system in Pender County. A lot of these projects are scored by public input, and we don't always score very well because our, our residents don't, don't, don't like to get on there and voice their opinions or concerns, but those do make a difference for the whole county of Pender, for the WMPO. We have two, only had two projects approved last year, and the New Hanover County had the remaining 19 or 20. So it's important for us to, to, you know, have, have a say in our own transportation system. Also out there are the little flyers that Adam, just more discussed, with, it's also got a QR code to the comprehensive plan meetings. I hope there's big turnout for that. It's a, it's a constant thing I hear every day about how outdated our, our comprehensive land use plan and our ordinances are. And this is a chance for the community and the citizens that, that feel that pain to have, have some say. So I encourage everybody that has the opportunity to attend one of those meetings to attend. I am concerned about, like I said earlier, about the early meetings. I want everybody to have the same opportunity, so maybe we can work something out with a consultant that we can move those to a time that's more convenient to people. And there may, you know, we, we've done this several times. We make these opportunities available, and nobody shows up, but at least we've made the opportunity available. I'm going to harp on something that I've harped on several times, and that's, and it was pretty obvious in parts of eastern Pender County, this time where the, where a lot of the flooding was at, is our, is our will to let the developer come in and clear cut everything, even the dog fennels off, off the field and not leave a tree. There's places on 117 that had never flooded, and now that they've clear-cut right there by Blake's Farm on 117, there's high, still high water sign there. There's no water there, but it's never flooded before, but we let them come in, they take all the trees off, and then maybe four or five years later, they'll come in and put their stormwater system in. So where does that water go in the meantime? It goes in the road. It goes in the people's yards. I rode down through Scottsdale. I rode through those neighborhoods. I seen what was coming off of, of where that development behind Popular Grove is clear-cut, everything there. Those 300-year-old oak trees that used to be there, that soaked up 1,000 gallons an hour are no longer there. All that water is one of these people's garages. Ride down through Washington Acres, where that 60 acres plus was clear-cut for the plant 30 apartment buildings. Where does all that water go? That stormwater system is not up and functional, but they're allowed to continue, you know, building and then put that in later. So I, I'd really like for us to see us go back and revisit our tree ordinance, do away with the, with the addition to the ordinance where we allowed them to clear before permits were obtained, and maybe that will at least slow it down for a little while. And I've encouraged that a couple of times now. I'll encourage it again, and once I have a, not chair again, I'll make that motion to have that done. We got it done for the campers and, and our accessory buildings, and we're looking to get it done for campers. The least we can do is get it done for the trees.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I have no, nothing else.
I'm just wanting to get that done.
Have a motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion to go into closed session for Item Number Three, Attorney/Client Privilege, and Item Four, Economic Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Oh, there's a favor to raise your right hand. We are now in closed session. We'll be back at seven o'clock before the.
We'll be back at seven o'clock before the.
So this is welcome y'all to the public hearing and special use permits and zoning map amendments and resolutions part of the meeting. I'll go ahead and read the public comment narrative while we're waiting for Mr. McCoy. When if you're signed up to speak, speakers will be acknowledged by the county manager in order in which names appear on the sheet or maybe county attorney. Who's got the sheet now? Oh, sorry, county attorney. Speaker shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity in discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. And he's still not here. Well, we'll go ahead and start. Is that okay? Is that all right with y'all? Mr. McCoy will come in. You'll just excuse Mr. McCoy when he comes in and let him sit down. That'd be appreciated.
Twenty-one point one, rezoning twenty-four or twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six. Rest request to modify. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight I present it. Sorry, can you hear me okay? Everybody, okay, great. Case rezone twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six KG Plaza LLC. The applicant owner is requesting to modify an existing conditional zoning district to allow for the residents of the Sanctuary at Forest Sound to store recreational vehicles within a private facility in the development. The private private storage facility will be approximately four point five one acres with a hundred and six storage units. The existing conditional district was approved in two thousand and fifteen and allowed for the development of a hundred and six single family homes. We have a vicinity map here. The red highlighted and hatched area is a subject property. It's right off of US Highway seventeen, right next to the intersection of seventeen and Forest Sound Road, very close proximity to the Hampstead Annex. We can see from the aerial map, the outlined subject property. It's a heavily vegetated area, mostly trees there along the roads. And right behind it to the west is the Sanctuary at Forest Sound community. It is zoned RM CD one. It's a residential mixed conditional zoning district. It's surrounded by residential performance and general business. This is the applicant's original site plan consisting of a hundred and fifty-four storage units. After feedback from the public input meeting in the community, they have decided to reduce the number of storage units to a hundred and six to be consistent with the number of homes. Here is what it looks like now. A lot more open space to the back, less units, and an overall reduction of about thirty-one percent in the total footprint. Here we have traffic counts provided by the WMPO and NC DOT. We see that US Highway seventeen is over capacity, which we all probably knew. But this is a reserved use for the residents of Sanctuary at Forest Sound. Therefore, the there's not an anticipated increase in traffic as they're already going to be traveling that road. There are no residential uses being proposed for this conditional zoning district and commercial uses would be NACs code five three one one three zero. And then the miscellaneous use storage of boats and watercraft outdoors on or on dry stacked structures. We have our setback table. There'll be thirty foot setback all around with a maximum height of forty feet for structures. We have our landscaping and buffer table. There will be an A four buffer along the road on Forest Sound and the rest will be buffered by existing vegetation. The A four buffer consists of a thirty foot wide strip with one canopy tree, two understory trees, and a grass or other vegetative ground
When you say the subject property on one of your slides back there, and I have it in front of me, one more. Is that where they're proposing the storage?
Yes, ma'am. It'll the storage facility will be approximately where this line is, but I've a in this slide.
Is that the hundred and twenty acre? How large is that?
This is I believe it's I believe this is sixty acres, sixty and a half behind it to west here, kind of southwest. That's the rest of Sanctuary at Forest Sound where the hundred and six homes are.
Okay. But this this is where they're under this tree canopy is where they're proposing the storage units.
Here is the proposed entrance and proposed storage area where they'll be located on the parcel. The future land use map classifies this as low density residential. And staff is recommending approval for this project. Amending the conditional zoning district would be consistent with the intent of the initial development by providing an amenity to existing residential development. Proposal is supported by one policy and one recommended action in the future land use plan. Policy five point one point F conditional zoning and recommended action five point one point K point one discourage the construction of storage facilities along the road frontage. And I can go into further detail on those policies if the board would like. Staff is recommending the following conditions approval to consider in approving the conditional zoning for the site. This is between staff and the planning board or rather the planning board recommended some of these approve or conditions of approval. First, the project shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. The applicant shall meet all other state local --
Yes.
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 --
So this is, welcome y'all to the public hearing, the special use permits and zoning map amendments and resolutions, part of the meeting. I'll go ahead and read the public comment narrative while we're waiting from Mr. McCoy. If you're signed up to speak, speakers will be acknowledged by the county manager in the order in which names appear on the sheet, or maybe county attorney.
County attorney.
Who's got the sheet now? Oh, sorry, county attorney. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin comments by stating name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks, the use of profanity, and discussion of personnel or other matters deemed confidential by law. And he's still not here. Well, we'll go ahead and start. Is that okay? Is that all right with y'all? Mr. McCoy will come in. You'll just excuse Mr. McCoy when he comes in and let him sit down. That'd be appreciated. Twenty-one point one, rezoning twenty-four, or twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six, request to modify. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sorry, where's the caller? Excuse me. Tonight, I present, sorry, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Everybody, okay, great. Case rezoned twenty twenty-four dash sixty-six KG Plaza LLC, the applicant owner is requesting to modify an existing conditional zoning district to allow for the residents of the Sanctuary at Forest Sound to store recreational vehicles within a private facility in the development. The private, private storage facility will be approximately four point five one acres with a hundred and six storage units. The existing conditional district was approved in two thousand and fifteen and allowed for the development of a hundred and six single-family homes. We have a vicinity map here. The red highlighted and hatched area is the subject property. It's right off of US Highway seventeen, right next to the intersection of seventeen and Forest Sound Road, very close proximity to the Hampstead Annex. We can see from the aerial map, the outlined subject property, it's a heavily vegetated area, mostly trees there along the roads, and right behind it to the west is the Sanctuary at Forest Sound community. It is zoned RM CD one. It's a residential mixed conditional zoning district. It's surrounded by residential performance and general business. This is the applicant's original site plan, consisting of a hundred and fifty-four storage units. After feedback from the public input meeting in the community, they have decided to reduce the number of storage units to a hundred and six, to be consistent with the number of homes. Here is what it looks like now, a lot more open space to the back, less units, and an overall reduction of about thirty-one percent in the total footprint. Here we have traffic counts provided by the WMPO and NC DOT. We see that US Highway seventeen is over capacity, which we all probably knew, but this is a reserved use for the residents of Sanctuary at Forest Sound. Therefore, the, there's not an anticipated increase in traffic as they're already going to be traveling that road. There are no residential uses being proposed for this conditional zoning district, and commercial uses would be NACs code five-three-one-one-three-zero, and then the miscellaneous use, storage of boats and watercraft outdoors on, or on dry stack structures. We have our setback table, there'll be thirty-foot setback all around with a maximum height of forty feet for structures. We have our landscaping and buffer table. There will be an A-four buffer along the road on Forest Sound, and the rest will be buffered by existing vegetation. The A-four buffer consists of a thirty-foot wide strip with one canopy tree, two understory trees, and a grass or other vegetative ground cover.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
When you say the subject property on one of your slides back there, and I have it in front of me, one more, is that where they're proposing the storage?
Yes, ma'am. It'll, the storage facility will be approximately where this line is, but I've, in this slide...
Is that the hundred and twenty acre, how large is that?
This is, I believe it's, I believe this is sixty acres, sixty and a half behind it to west here, kind of southwest, that's the rest of Sanctuary at Forest Sound where the hundred and six homes are.
Okay. But this, this is where they're, under this tree canopy is where they're proposing the storage units?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Here is the proposed entrance and proposed storage area, where they'll be located on the parcel. The future land use map classifies this as low-density residential, and staff is recommending approval for this project. Amending the conditional zoning district would be consistent with the intent of the initial development by providing an amenity to existing residential development. Proposal is supported by one policy and one recommended action in the future land use plan. Policy five-point-one-point-F conditional zoning and recommended action five-point-one-point-K-point-one, discourage the construction of storage facilities along the road frontage, and I can go into further detail on those policies if the board would like. Staff is recommending the following conditions of approval to consider in approving the conditional zoning for the site. This is between staff and the planning board, or rather, the planning board recommended some of these appro, or conditions of approval. First, the project shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. The applicant shall meet all other state, local, and federal regulations. The storage facility shall remain private and only for the use of the residents of the Sanctuary at Forest Sound Development. For the developer, shall be fully responsible financially or otherwise for the repair of any damage or maintenance issues on the Forest Sound Road until the boat storage facility has received a certificate of occupancy. Once the certificate of occupancy has been issued, maintenance costs for Forest Sound Road shall revert to the original maintenance agreement. Five, the site of the storage facility will be of a pervious surface. There will be no dry stack structures, and the apron and entrance of the storage facility will be pervious concrete at a minimum of a hundred and sixty-one foot length.
Should I that last one again?
The apron and entrance of the storage facility will be a pervious concrete and a minimum of one hundred and sixty-one foot length. The planning board unanimously approved, or recommended approval for this when it went before them. And is there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Can I direct you back to where the conditions, one of the conditions says that it remains private. Was there any distinction made between property owners or residents? How was that characterized?
I believe it's homeowners. I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Okay, so all I'm saying is someone could own houses, rent houses, and then you've got more than what was anticipated. Then you've got the homeowner, I mean, you've got the property owner.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you've got the, how private are we making this?
I believe it's all residents. I'm not sure if that distinction was made.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Newton, the condition three says the storage facility shall remain private and only for the use of residents of the Sanctuary at Forest Sound. Are there any questions from other members of the board? Or anything I could explain further?
So do you know why they're not opting to go with the Lee Drive? Can you speak to why the Lee Drive?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that there's wetlands near Lee Drive and developing that is not recommended, and that there is an agreement for the applicant to be able to use Forest Sound Road. I believe that, the applicant can speak more to this, but I believe the agreement is from decades ago where they have access to that road.
How many access, they have access to the neighborhood, that's one access. How many access did it specify? How many accesses they could have to that road? What is the purpose of that access? Is it just for?
Just for the storage, yes, sir.
So when the access point, the driveway and the apron area was, was ample research done in that because you knew, storage unit is going to be boats, stuff like that, it's going to be big boats.
Yes, sir.
There's plenty of room to navigate your way in that entrance, that's...
Yes, sir. The applicant can speak a little bit more to this, but I believe that the planning board, they went over how they tested it, and that there was, they found that there was enough room.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other questions for staff before we get to that? Mr. Rose, you good?
I'm good.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I believe the applicant has a presentation prepared.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington, and I represent the applicant owner in this request. We appreciate the opportunity to make a brief presentation and have a series of slides, which I hope will help explain the request and answer questions that the board may have. With me here this evening are Brad Schuler, who is a land planner with Paramount Engineering, as well as Jeremy Blair. He is a civil engineer with Paramount Engineering. And then my client representatives, Robert Jackson and Dean Hardison are also here. I'll start out by saying what this is, the project is not, just to clarify. This is not open to the public. It is not a commercial boat or recreational vehicle storage. There'll be no renting or selling of slips or spaces. There's no change in the residential density. There's no dry stack storage of boats or other RV-type vehicles. There's no mini storage units. There's really no structures involved, except my understanding is there's proposed a gate to gate the, the entryway, but other than that, this is not a, like a mini storage facility in any way. I know that the board is very familiar with the area, and, but this will provide some context. We circled the Pender County Annex Building there in blue, and I won't go through the details of the twenty fifteen approval, but in twenty fifteen, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the one hundred and six unit, single-family subdivision. The entire property, Commissioner Newton, to your question, the entire property was the hundred and twenty acres, and then the part, the part that we're talking about is rough, roughly half that, about sixty point five acres.
Where the wetland portion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is located?
Correct, yes, ma'am. And you can see there that the proposed RV boat storage area is shown dotted in blue there, and there are, from what I understand, some significant wetlands in the, around the area, and that's what's limiting the access, or would, you would want the access on Forest Sound Road. But I, I certainly can defer to the engineers on, on specific questions about the wetlands. So here is the area of the proposed modification to the existing conditional zoning. And just to provide, again, just some context here, there's the Pender County Annex Building. It's, as everyone knows, it's quite commercial there on, on Highway seventeen. The, there's the entrance to Forest Sound Road, and then you can see, the star represents the approximate location of the proposed RV and boat storage, and then you can see the approximate location of the proposed entrance. So it's fairly close to seventeen, and while it is putting, you would say there's sort of boat travel, trailering, traffic on that area, it's not really taking that through the, the significant, or the vast, the majority of the neighborhood streets that are to the east of there. You can see the approved residential lots at the top of the screen, and then just in the, the bottom of the screen, you can see the commercial and civic uses. So it, it really is sort of within that sort of buffer area between the commercial and then the residential, and it, it will be sort of out of sight for the most part, so you won't be having like storage on the, say, on seventeen. I know there's some things in your land use plan that sort of discourage that type of use, but for the most part, it will largely be, you won't really see it.
Ms. Attorney Nichols, one of the questions, what I was trying to get to a while ago was on the sixty acres that includes the wetlands.
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to be heavily wooded. How much of that sixty acres is going to need to be cut, and what improvements will be made for drainage once those trees are cut on that sixty acres around the wetlands area? That's my concern.
Yes, ma'am. So the area that we're talking about is roughly four and a half acres of that sixty and a half acres. I want to make sure I'm answering the question accurately as to the drainage and the impacts with that, so if I may defer to Jeremy Blair, the engineer, on that question.
I don't mean to interrupt your presentation. If you need to address it later on, feel free.
If that's okay with the board?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. The original site plan, as mentioned, had significantly more spaces on there. I think it was a hundred and fifty-six, if I'm not mistaken. But as a result of the community meeting, that proposed site plan was reduced to the one oh six, so it matches exactly the number of permitted residential lots. And as I said before, it, it will just be one space per residential lot, and it's purely a amenity for the neighborhood. It's, this is not, it can't be rented, it can't be sort of subleased out to a friend or something like that. That, that's, that's a proposed condition for the board's consideration. So here's a slide showing the overall reduction in the footprint from the original plan to the revised plan, and again, that was just to minimize, try to minimize the impact and downsize the, the proposal based on the community meeting. And frankly, really didn't need that many spaces. For the most part, probably not everybody in the neighborhood's going to have a boat or an RV, so the idea of all of the spaces at one oh six being used is probably not likely, although certainly wanted to have the ability for each lot to have a place to put the boat or their RV. But for the most part, it's probably not likely that it would be maxed out with a hundred and six boats or RVs. The gated access, as I mentioned, is set off of Forest Sound Road by a hundred and sixty-one feet, and that was to allow the vehicles to sort of come in, and it would prevent sort of stacking onto Forest Sound Road. There's ample space there. And, see, Mr. Cherry mentioned the, the land use plan. I won't get into this in detail. I know the, the staff did a very good job going through that in the staff packet. Again, this is consistent with the residential nature of the approved subdivision, and it's, again, an amenity for the residential subdivision. I'm glad to go through any of the policies or goals in the land use plan if the board would, would like me to do that, but again, staff did a very good job of that in the staff report. I would point out that this is really a very minimal traffic impact. This is from the TRC notes, but it's hard to, it's hard to really analyze what the impacts would be, but the AM and PM peak hour trips would be very minimal. This is not typically something that you, probably the higher use would be on the weekends, so it's not probably going to coincide with what you would think of as a weekday PM or AM peak hour trip. And then in the staff report, it mentions here that the, the trips, again, are going to be really, really pretty minimal when you're, when, I know this board's used to looking at these traffic tables and things, and there's significant numbers on there, but with two and three peak hour trips, it's really pretty minimal.
Why does it say many warehouse?
I, I don't know. I think that was the...
That was going to be my question. How many were, of those spaces were under roof?
None. No, sir, none, none. The, the boat and RV spaces, there's, there'll be no sort of roofing structures or anything like that.
Commissioner Newton, if I may answer that question, the WMPO uses essentially a large book that categorizes uses and then determines a specific number of trips based on that use. And there's a note, I believe, on the previous slide, Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
It says, basically, there's no comparable use to what is being proposed, so they chose what they thought was most closely aligned.
It's one of those technical terms of art that I don't ever...
Right.
So also, that impervious surface, what will that be? I know you have to have something fairly solid to be pulling boats in and out, so, and RVs, so what will that impervious surface be?
I think, I think the majority of it is pervious.
Yeah.
It's all pervious.
Yeah, Jeremy, if you don't mind. This is Jeremy Blair with Paramount Engineering.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood then when I was hearing the conditions.
Hi, Jeremy Blair, civil engineer with Paramount Engineering. So the, the hundred and sixty-one foot stem apron is going to be a pervious concrete, which, you know, allows for the, the water to all soak through and infiltrate, and then the remainder is a, will be a, you know, a structural stone with a geo grid, which DEQ recognizes as, as pervious as well.
Okay, very good. So while you're up there, can you answer my question about the clear cutting of the trees?
Yeah, so, as, as Mr. Nichols said, it's, you know, four and a half acres out of sixty, and with it all being pervious, all of the drainage is proposed to, to soak into the ground, not run off, so it'll be...
I'm gonna hold you to it.
Very similar to the, to the current state, is certainly the intent.
Thank you.
I think just a few more slides, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll, again, glad to answer any questions. The proposed conditions, I know the staff went through those, I'll just highlight a few. You have to comply with all the requirements in the ordinance. We have to meet all the local, state, and federal regulations. I mentioned the part about it has, it's purely private and for the Sanctuary at Forest Sound Development only. This part I wanted to mention, my client will be fully responsible financially for the repair or damage to any of the, if anything happens to Forest Sound Road during the construction of it, he'll repair that at his cost. There is a road maintenance agreement that's in place, so my client's already responsible for fifty percent of, of the cost of maintenance of the road. Jeremy talked about the perv, the pervious surface, no dry stack structures, and then this was the wording of the seventh condition in the staff report, and the, the one item we would ask the board to consider is, after the planning board hearing, we discussed the possibility that the NCD EQ might have some different requirements for the length of that or what surface it would be. So what we'd ask the board to consider would be adding that it would be subject to modification of the requirements of the permitting agencies in condition number two, and that would really be only if, when it gets to the permitting at the state level, if the state, for some reason, doesn't want to have a hundred and sixty-one feet of pervious concrete, but wants, say, a lesser amount and some other material there, just so we're not out of compliance with state requirements. So we appreciate your consideration of that change. We just don't know till we get to that part at the state level. Planning board unanimously recommended approval. The planning staff, I think, did a great job with the report, and we're glad to answer any questions that, that the board may have, and we appreciate, appreciate your time.
So what made the Lee Allen connect, in two thousand and fifteen, when it was initially approved, it, it stated that if there's any modifications to this conditional zoning, adding structures or any other, that, that would be reevaluated. Was it adequately evaluated? Why the, the first street connection off of Lee Drive, which would make more sense for safety-wise? Was that adequately evaluated, and if so, what's the findings?
I'm going to defer back to Jeremy or the land planner on that, if they, or my client, Robert, Robert Jackson.
Can we get to the slide?
Yeah.
To the logo slide? Tell me which one. The area?
Keep going. The zoning, the, there we go. Right here, right here, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a pointer?
I don't know. The red.
Okay.
Got you.
I'm Robert Jackson, six-four, Maritime Way, Topsail Beach, the applicant, Sanctuary at Forest Sound. And yes, to answer your question, we've got, actually, that's not this real slide, there's wetland, let me get back to, this is upland, the, the white area. Anything in gray, I think that's a gray hash mark, is wetlands. And so we've already, we're at the limit for a general permit for the US Army Corps of Engineers with our project. That was entailed from the beginning. We're at a half acre of wetland impacts. So the Corps will not issue a wetland fill permit if you've already exceeded or at, or not exceeded, if you at the fill permit, or if you have an upland access. So if you have a way to get to your property, upland versus filling the wetland, they say, well, nice try, you need to go to the upland side. And Mr. Hall, Alec Hall, who developed the original Forest Sound, negotiated with Mr. Howard, the seller at that time for all this property, or the owner of all this property, that there could be ingress and egress for the remaining parcels that Mr. Hall did not buy onto Forest Sound Road, which includes the subject property that we're discussing here tonight. So, and, so there is no way to get to this upland site without coming through Forest Sound Road legally or to be able to permit it.
Yeah.
So yes, sir, we did. And a couple people at the community mentioned, well, hey, if you could get access, this isn't a, an improved road, but there is a right-of-way here. If you could get access to this right-of-way, could you put boat storage in here behind these homes on, I think this is Lee Drive, but behind the homes on Lee Drive? And there isn't enough width. One, there's no legal right-of-way built, but there's not enough width or turnaround, or, I mean, it would... or, I mean, it would, maybe you could get 10 boats in there or something. I mean, it'd be very limited for 106 lot neighborhood, as you can see the width of, of this upland area. So we did, we did analyze that, to answer your question, but it just wasn't feasible for this size project. And I will say, when we did, Mr. Bieberstein, who's probably no past, but he represented us when we did this project initially, and at that time, we didn't know the amenity. I mean, we didn't, we were in the infant, planning stages of the project, so we didn't know if we were going to have a pool, a boat storage, a playground, or what have you. So he included, and it's on page 305 of the UDO, because it was a conditional use zoning case, so it included the proposed uses within RMCD-1 residential mixed, this is under rezoning proposal, Gray Bull, Inc., that's, that's us. The proposed uses are residential mixed, conditional zoning district, our telecommunications tower, single-family dwelling, conventional detached homes, and other typical neighborhood amenities, which, again, we, we're here to say that we think in Pender County, a boat storage is a typical neighborhood amenity. You know, if you have the land and the accessibility to have one, it keeps people off the highways, you're in proximity to your boat, you can, it's probably more secure that way, and you can get your family in and out more quickly when, the few times you get to use it. So, and I did have, just for reference, legally, Mr. Bieberstein, the seller's attorney, which was Mr. Nunley, I believe, and the HOA's attorney at the time, who I don't know, remember his name, reviewed the deeded legal access from our property to Forest Sound Road prior to even submitting and designing the site, and the title insurance company and all three attorneys agreed that we had unlimited access from Mr. Howard's original parcel, which is now our parcel, to Forest Sound Road. In addition to that, in our community meeting, we did enter, engage voluntarily, in the, in the community meeting, engage into a road maintenance agreement with Forest Sound Road, 50/50. From our entrance to the neighborhood that we built here, the entrance here, it's approximately, I think it's approximately a mile, don't hold me to that, to 17, we share in 50% of that maintenance. In addition to that, as part of our agreement, our private HOA agreement or whatnot, we agreed to repave that, and we did do that. It was $92,000 to repave that section from our entrance to 17. And also, the HOA negotiated a gated entrance, I'm going to say 30 or 40 feet, to the east of our entrance for security. And we had agreed to pay that, I think it was $41,000 approximately. Today, they still haven't gated it, but they did put up two brick columns. So I think we, in my view, we were a neighborly developer, for lack of a better way of describing it. Are there any other questions?
So, as you know, then the Forest Sound Road's going to become a right-only turn in the next five or six years. I still think it would be better to go down Dan Owens Drive across, safety-wise, and up Lee Drive than it's going to be trying to get in and out of Forest Sound Road. Forest Sound Road's a nightmare now.
Yeah, no, I-
And pulling a boat out there, I could only imagine what it's like. The majority of the people that live in that Forest Sound, you know, have their own public or private boat ramp.
Yes, sir. Now, we did build, I don't know if this, I guess it's, this is Second Street that, that comes between, Second Street starts on Lee Drive and comes all the way to Forest Sound. That's not an exact depiction of it, but it's close enough. This is better. Second Street comes into here and goes and cuts to Forest Sound. This is our entrance. This is a public DOT road. We were mandated by the county to make that, but part of the, I think it was the Collector Street program or what's not, to make this a public DOT road, and of course, and DOT will maintain it when we dedicate it to them. So any resident, which I would prefer also, should, in my view, with a boat and trailer, should take a right out of the facility, come down Second Street, and head over to the light. And there's plenty of turning radius in our new driveway entrance to take a right or a left. Understand it would be shorter for them to, distance-wise, to go up to 17, but if it were my, if it were my family, I'd say, no, let's just go the long way and go to the traffic signal. But again, that is going to be up to the, that's going to be prerogative of the driver. But this, this road is installed and meets DOT guidelines. We have a basic letter on it, and it is set up for a dedication.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thurman, is there a public comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nichols, do Mr. Blair or Mr. Jackson have anything else they want to say?
No, sir, only if the board asks questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brooke Connor?
Hello, my name is Brooke Connor. I live at 105 Hilltop Lane in Hampstead, and I'm a resident of the Forest Sound community.
Can you speak up or speak into the microphone? I'm having problems here.
Is that better? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want me to repeat my address or my name?
I don't need it.
Okay. I am a resident of the Forest Sound community. I'm also part of the HOA Board, and I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf of our community and the concerns that we have over KG Plaza using our road, Forest Sound Road, for the access to their amenity. I think one of the, the biggest concerns that we haven't been able to understand is why the revaluation for access off of Lee Drive extension, as you were mentioning, had not been evaluated. I did talk to Mr. Jackson when we had the public meeting and asked him specifically if he had looked into any other options, and he told me that he had not. And I asked him if he'd be willing to do so, and he said he would consider it. So I don't know what else, what other evaluation has transpired since I had that conversation with him, but my understanding was that basically, he said it's wetlands, and there's nothing we can do to, you know, look for access from another direction, and Forest Sound Road is our only option. So this means that there's going to be a boatyard in our community, an entrance in our community for another community, which is highly irregular. I'm sure that some of you live in a community, maybe, you know, it's gated, maybe it's not, and I don't know that you would ever think that you could be driving down a road in your own community and see another community's boatyard. And the, one of the other concerns, excuse me, that we have is that, you know, it's unsightly. A boatyard is unsightly. A boatyard has, you know, large trucks and trailers coming in and out of it, that's going to be, you know, further damage to the road, further traffic up at the, at the entrance to Forest Sound, up at Highway 17. I mean, it's already very difficult getting in and out of there during the busy times, and now we're going to have, you know, boats and trailers going in and out. I just feel like there hasn't been adequate time spent to evaluate another option, or Mr. Jackson possibly should have planned his community in another way. If he knew he wasn't going to have the ability to build an amenity and have access to that amenity inside his own community, you know, when he originally, you know, was laying out the neighborhood, I don't understand why that should now be a consequence of the residents of Forest Sound. So there are many, many concerns that the neighborhood has. These are a few. One of the other things is that they say it's only for residents, and they say it's, it's not going to be rented. But how can you control that? I'm sorry, is that?
Are you speaking on behalf of the HOA?
Yes.
She gets five minutes. She gets two extra minutes. Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't, is that my warning? Okay, I'm sorry, I've never spoken at one of these before. I'm sorry, where was I? I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. One of the other concerns, oh, I'm sorry, yes, the, they say that it's only for residents and that cannot be rented, which, how are you going to control that? This is an entrance to, to a boatyard inside of our community for another neighborhood, and there is no way that you can control whether or not they're going to rent that out to people who aren't in that community. Once that HOA is handed over to the residents, who's going to enforce that? And that's going to open our community up to potentially, you know, new people coming in, safety concerns for people who are, you know, coming into our neighborhood who have never been in there before. I mean, having a boat storage yard already in and of itself is going to attract a possible theft and other things like that. And it's just not, it's just not right that this would be, that, that our local government would allow somebody to put this type of amenity into our neighborhood. I know it's their land, but the entrance, all the activity, everything going on in there is happening from our neighborhood. The last thing that I want to mention is that if this is actually approved, I would, I would think that there should be greater consideration for the buffer. I think it's a 30-foot buffer is what it states. We have, I think, a 20-foot buffer today for the community that they built. There's no buffer. You see every house, you see what everybody's doing in their backyard, it's just a thin lining of trees. And to have only 10 feet more of a buffer, you're going to be able to see everything sitting in that boatyard. So if it comes down to the fact that this board is going to approve, then at least give consideration for a larger buffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Connor?
How you doing? Jesse Connor, 105 Hilltop Lane, Hampstead, North Carolina, 28443. I think my wife did a pretty good job speaking there, but just wanted to reiterate, the biggest thing is the Lee Drive extension. My wife chased down the builder several times, asking him about whether he had looked into the Lee Drive extension, and is, he always had the same answer of, I haven't really actually looked into it, never did the research. So if he did do this research, my question to you guys is, did he actually submit it to you? Because I've yet to see anything on, on this Lee Drive extension. So if he's got the, if he's done the investigation now, why doesn't he release that information to you guys? The other thing I want to talk about is his friendly building that he's been doing. He's flooded out our community. During Florence, our causeway flowed over the road. We just had her, or this tropical storm that came through, Debbie, is that what it was, this tropical storm? That came through, it flooded our causeway. That had never happened before, except Florence, and then now our causeway is flooding. Why is that happening? It's happening because of his sanctuary that he built, and it's dumping all the water down through there. What's going to happen when we go and take out another five acres of property, which, you know, we all know trees drink, what, how much, how much water? A pine tree, I think, can drink 300 gallons of water in a day or something like that? Like, so he's taken out another five acres of property and dumping more water down to us. He can talk about, you know, impervious all he wants, or pervious. Lastly, this is another thing that I'm worried about with him. He doesn't probably want to use this Lee Drive extension because he's got 60 acres of land there. He only wants to build five acres, or he only wants to do a five-acre lot? What's he going to do with the rest of that? Is he going to get this project done and then turn around and come back to you guys? And do you try to do something on Lee Drive extension where he can put in some more housing or some sort of other amenities, or sell it off to somebody, some commercial real estate place or whatever, and then it gets built up on then? So, you know, it's just, it's the same old, same old, the same old bait and switch these guys do. They start, they start one project, and they know what they're going to do further down the road, and then they get that one done, and it's just like what he's doing with our, the access. We had an agreement with him for one access. He's got that access. Now he wants more. I just wish you guys would look into this and please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the signups, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask a question of Attorney Nichols?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nichols?
You may not be the appropriate one to ask this question, but there was a comment made about wanting additional access on the Forest Sound Road, when in fact, when the sanctuary project was initially proposed and originated, there was only one access. Now there's two. Is that appro, is that correct?
I, I don't know that, that, that's correct. I, I-
I, I guess, I guess my question should be, this boat storage facility, in, in approving this proposal, would add an additional access on to Forest Sound Road?
It would, it would add an additional access on to Forest Sound Road, yes. I, I'm not, I may defer to my client here, but I don't know that I've seen a document that says my client can have one access and one access only. I've read the road maintenance agreement. I have copies, if the board would like it. I know when my client mentioned spent a significant amount of money improving or sort of redoing Forest Sound Road after the development, my client does have the right to use Forest Sound Road, and I understand, and I appreciate what the neighbors are saying when they're saying it's their road or their neighborhood, but it's, my client does have the right to use it, and, and he did construct the, I would say, which is a benefit to everybody, the connector between Forest Sound Road and what eventually gets you to Factory Road. So I think that's a benefit for everybody.
Well, let me ask this other question.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the sanctuary, as proposed and developed, if these residents were putting that boat in their backyard-
Yes, ma'am.
-they would have the right to travel down this road to get to their home in that existing access?
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly right. They could park their boat in their driveway. I don't know that there's any limitation on that, but they have the right to use that road, to bring their RV down there.
So theoretically, I guess, if these homeowners in the sanctuary had a boat, they could drag it down Forest Sound Road and put it in their yard, or they could drive it a lesser distance down Forest Sound Road and put it in the, in for safekeeping into the boat storage?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I, I, that is correct.
Okay.
And I think it goes to the issue too about the concern about it perhaps being unsightly, but again, this, the gate itself, I can go back to that, is 161 feet off of, if I can find that.
And, and that, and that buffer is what I was trying to get to earlier when I said, how much of, how much of it under this canopy are you going to cut?
I don't think there's any intent to cut any of the natural buffer. You can see the scale of this, is, you can see where the 30-foot buffer is shown, and I think the 30-foot buffer type A4 is a requirement, but beyond that, there's no, there's no intent to cut anything that is, does not need cut. And there's quite a bit of vegetation out there, so, but the plan is showing, and I think is required to have that 30-foot buffer, but you can see the extension before you even get to the, the gate is another, is another 130 feet. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to also mention here, this slide is somewhat deceptive, in my view. This, the white area just indicates uplands, not clearing. So it's all wooded. So the area that's hatched here where the trailers and boats and whatnot, and the drive will go through, is 3.1 acres of the 4.5 acres of upland. So I think, one of your earlier questions, how much are we clearing of the site? And we're only clearing what's necessary for the parking and the ingress and egress, so-
And you said about four and a half acres?
The whole site, and then three point-
And then how much are you going to clear?
Approximately 3.1 of the four and a half acres.
Okay.
So of the 60 acres, 3.1 acres will be cleared, and, I don't, no, I'm not good at this slide, but-
Let's go to the, the upland's area on Lee-
Yes, ma'am.
-that accesses Lee.
Okay.
What's the upland's acreage on Lee?
I would have to get that, bear with me one second, I'm going to try to-
Wrong question.
I'm sorry. Got the wrong guy driving. I did want to mention, there isn't, back to the ingress and egress just a little bit, when Mr. Howard nega- when Mr. Howard negotiated-
Let's not, let's go back to the uplands on Lee like I asked him.
Keep going.
She wants the Lee Drive, the-
Hi, my name's Brad Schiller, my land planner with Paramount Engineering. I'm referring to this slide here because you see in the vicinity map, that is the actual wetlands. The previous plan was the plan from 2015.
I'm asking the question, show me and tell me, how much uplands is on that six, roughly 60-acre parcel that fronts Lee Drive or Road or whatever it is?
This little section right here is approximately 3.4 acres.
I, I can't see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Where are you?
Right here.
In the top left corner.
Oh, gotcha. So how much acreage is that uplands?
It's approximately 3.4 acres.
Which is approximately the size of the-
You should clear on the other side.
-amount that you're going to clear to have access on Forest Sound Road?
Correct. And if-
So again, tell me why you don't put the boat storage on Lee?
Well, one, ma'am, we would need to buffer that first. So we have residents living on Lee Drive, so I'm just def, giving deference to those folks that live on Lee Drive. We've got a site that will be almost invisible from anybody, even when you're driving down Forest Sound Road and Lee Drive, because of the way it's situated in the trees, number one.
Understood.
And so Lee Drive-
But you said earlier that that upland site that fronts Lee's is not sufficient in size for your purposes?
It is not. I was going to say, the second reason is after we buffer that site, at least 30 feet, then the width of it, as you can see here, the width where we have the majority of our boat storage from the red dot, I don't, maybe Brad can tell me that exact width, we don't have that much geography for the ingress and egress of a boat, the trailer, the 161 feet of storage, and so on. So that the mechanics of the parking lot will not work there, if that makes sense.
If you had to put a buffer.
Or even without a buffer to put a hundred and six-
If you had to put a 30-foot buffer, it would make the size not workable for the uplands parcel on Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, is that a true statement?
It is, especially for 106 boat storage lots.
Gotcha.
I'm not saying we can't put any there, and my comment at the community meeting was just intuitively by looking at the geography of the site, it won't fit there, but I'm not saying no boats will fit there, I'm just saying a facility for the neighborhood won't fit there.
Okay, I'm just trying to suss out reasons why we're not in accordance with the comments that we've heard. Can I ask staff a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way we could use a fencing rather than a 30-foot buffer?
Yes, ma'am, certainly. This is a conditional rezoning, so there's flexibility for the board to place conditions that, you know, if the applicant approves to, or consents to those conditions, then that is certainly a possible step.
Okay, thank you. Is this uplands, three and a half acres on uplands that fronts Lee, is that wooded?
Primarily, yes, ma'am. There's spots that are clear, but, I mean, wooded for the most part.
But the uplands area, for the most part, is it just as wooded as is the other parcel of uplands that fronts Forest Sound?
I would say it's very similar, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Pretty much the whole site, all 60 acres is, is wooded.
Is there anything, whether you do it on either uplands parcel, is there anything that you could think of? Because I'm concerned that there is, because of the, excuse me, the sanctuary development, that there's additional water flooding being experienced by other homeowners around the sanctuary? Is there anything or any conversation or any plans to do any drainage or directing runoff wherever you clear for the boat basins?
Beyond having it 100% impervious, there's not a project I've ever done that's 100% impervious. So when we clear and when we install the geotech fabric and the, the rock matter and the impervious concrete, it will all be pervious. So there is, my answer would be, I don't know if there's anything else we could do beyond that. That would be, in my view, the gold standard of a-
When you cut trees, will you agree with me that there would be additional runoff?
Yes, ma'am. No, there's no question. I think that part of the problem, I'm just, again, I'm rehashing the, the area of the stormwater you're bringing up. Their causeway does flood. When, when Mr. Hall did that development, he didn't do it under the current stormwater or really any stormwater regulations. And at that time, to my knowledge, the development ordinance didn't require private roads to be built to DOT standards. So I do agree, they have an issue there, but that wasn't caused by the sanctuary. Their issue started in the 80s or 90s when that development started. Mr. Hall was here, he testified to that. But this particular development of the boat storage is 100% impervious. When the trees come out, the pervious matter goes in. So we're going to have, again, in my view, the state of North Carolina, Deener would tell you that a 100% pervious parking lot is very hard to come by. I don't know of one, and there probably is one, but I don't know of one, in the east side of 17. And just as a reference to the use, I counted, well, there's one at Salters Haven, not even 200 or 300 yards away. There are 12 residential, which I sent to Mr. Adams in my initial conversations, there are 12 residential, single-family neighborhoods with private boat storage facilities today as we speak, east of 17 in Hampstead. This isn't a unique situation at all, in my view. Matter of fact, it's a preferable one if you're a boat owner in Pender County.
But most of those are all designed inside of the neighborhood?
Yes, sir, they are, and I think there's some misnomer on the neighborhood. Mr. Howard, Mr. Hall did not buy this tract of land from Mr. Howard. He only bought a portion of it. So in exchange for that, he said, you can bring your private road through, but I'm going to have access to the road for, for my future seller, or he could have developed it, a separate neighborhood. So on any public or private road, if the owners of Forest Sound or Mr. Hall wanted to protect the site, they would have purchased it, and then they would have been able to remove the access to Forest Sound Road. But as it stands, at the time, Mr. Howard could have developed 20 lots that front Forest Sound Road, or 50, or however, I don't know how long it is, but one every 100 feet, to use RA zoning as an example. So that he didn't want to limit the access for land he didn't sell to the neighborhood to the east of him, you know, Forest Sound. So it, we are not, this is a private piece of property, it's not in the Forest Sound, it's called Sanctuary at Forest Sound, but it's not in their neighborhood, it was never part of their neighborhood, it wasn't a plat of their neighborhood, it was a separate parcel that Mr. Hall did not buy.
Because, because it's a 60-acre parcel that, from what I've gathered, is 50 acres wetlands and 10 acres of uplands in two different places.
Yeah, well, the whole parcel we bought was 127 acres, so the balance of that was uplands.
I'm talking about the parcel in question here.
Yes, ma'am.
The roughly 60 acres.
Yes, ma'am, that's true.
Is that primarily wetlands?
Yes, ma'am, that's true.
And what's going to happen when you cut five acres or three and a half acres of the uplands? What's going to happen with the remainder, remainder of the wetlands? Is that going to make it worse? Bring the water table up?
No, I wouldn't say so, ma'am. We're well within the Deener guidelines. I mean, we're, I think, beyond that as far as it relates to having a pervious facility. So I think anywhere in Pender County that you develop near wetlands, that there's trees that are taken out, and they have to deal with that in the Deener code, in the stormwater code. And there's, there's, you can have high density, which our, our project's low density. So you can have high density with stormwater ponds and have, you know, more, more lots, or you can have low density. And I think what we've designed here, I know it meets the state code, but I think in addition to that, being 100% impervious, I don't know of a different way we could do it more environmentally sensitive, that I know of.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Adams. Mr. Adams, currently, under the current zoning, if, if it was to stay, just like it is, and no action be taken, what would Mr. Jackson be by right legally able to build or put there right now?
Nothing.
Nothing? What's currently zoned?
It's a conditional zoning district, so when that zoning district was approved, that was not designated for any use. So if he were to, say, propose to build more homes, he'd have to come back before this board to amend that approval. So he's not allowed to, to build anything on that site without getting approval from this board.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah?
Is this your district or is this-
This is Commissioner Burton's. So we have a point for a motion.
If I, if I may just add one thing, I, I know the applicant had added a, if there is a motion to approve in those conditions of approval, I know the applicant had added a portion on to the last condition of approval, and I just want to clarify that-
Wouldn't that be redundant? That, that modification that he wanted on the condition with regards to the ingress and egress width and composition, that it be in accordance with state and other agency requirements? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do you have that, that you can pull up? His modified condition? His proposed modified condition? I didn't see it. There it is. Okay. Page is that?
That's in the applicant's presentation, so it's not in any of the reports.
Mr. Burton, what say ye?
Well, I think that the, the applicant has done his due diligence to improve the area. I think he spent a lot of money and got some agreements with the HOA on the roads. And I think being all of that area is going to be pervious, I would, I would move the motion with all his due diligence to move the motion to approve the zoning map amendment.
The language is on page 15.
I think I'm reading it.
Okay.
Finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies in Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Plan Use Policy 5.1.1, recommended by Action 5.1.1.1. Proposed rezoning is consistent with the low-density residential future land use plan in the Pender County 2.0 Comprehensive Use Plan proposal is reasonable and in the public interest because it is potential to be generally consistent with use, with current land uses in the vicinity.
Does your motion to approve include the conditional modification as proposed by the applicant?
Yeah, you can include the conditional modification, that if DEQ or the state requires any further on that entrance, that they'd be required to meet that.
Comply with-
Yes.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. I'll raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes 3-2. Thank you. Let me get back to where I was supposed to be. Revision to existing special use permit that permitted industrial park in Grady Township.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you. The second case on the agenda this evening is a revision to an existing special use permit. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And we had one sign up, I believe, if, yeah, just be sworn, silence where the testimony gives, even with the truth, the whole truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Spinks, affirm.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Members of the board, again, just a revision to an existing special use permit that was initially issued in 2009 and subsequently revised in 2014 that permitted an industrial park that we all know as Pender Commerce Park. So I'm going to just go through a, a little bit of brief background on this property and orient the board with the site, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Spinks if she has anything to add, although she's really more here just to answer any questions, should the board have them. So the map on the site, you can see the Pender Commerce Park is outlined or shaded in a light blue color. The subject property is in red, and the subject property is approximately 15 acres on the east side of US Highway 421, just north of the Pender-New Hanover County line. And some background on this property, or on the Commerce Park, if you will, on February 16th of 2009, a special use permit was issued for an industrial park that covered approximately 378 acres. That special use permit was revised in 2014 to expand the industrial park. And then on September 21st of 2021, the county sold the approximately 15 acres to Phillips Leasing Systems LLC. Here's a map of the site, just to give you some reference, this is a recorded map. The subject property is primarily zoned industrial, in the general industrial category, although the tail falls in the rural agricultural zoning district. Just a couple photos of the site, standing across 421, looking east towards the site, you can see that there appears to be a stub off 421 that's barricaded, and this is actually standing on that stub looking northeast to the subject property. This slide is really just intended to confirm to the board that removing this property from the special u, from the special use permit that governs the Commerce Park doesn't affect the existing special use permit or have any effect on the Commerce Park. So you can see that industrial parks are permitted in the general industrial zoning district via a special use permit, and they must have the following five items that are listed on the board there. By removing these 15 acres, we're not impairing the ability of the industrial park to continue to operate or be governed by the special use permit. The future land use map designates this property as industrial, which is consistent with the development pattern in this area. And on the screen are the findings of fact that are in the UDO that the board must make when issuing approval of a special use permit or special use permit revision. This is, this is the end of staff's presentation. Again, Ms. Spinks is here representing the applicant. She does not have a presentation prepared and really is just here to answer questions, should the board have them.
What's staff's recommendation?
We generally don't make recommendations on special use permits. I, I would say that this is consistent with the future land use plan. The property is zoned industrial, so it's reasonable to expect that industrial development will occur on this site. On the New Hanover County side, south of, you know, south of the subject site, it's also zoned for heavy, heavy industrial development, and the owner owns the adjacent property on the New Hanover County side as well.
Is there any additional questions? Or is there any questions for the applicant? If there are no questions, is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the second. I'll raise your right hand. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
You're good. 21.3, revision to an existing special use permit that prohibited, permitted a community boating facility in Long Point Estates neighborhood with Topsail Township.
And this is S and P, so we will need to swear, and we have a number of sign up. Anyone who has signed up, thinks they have the language to speak on this matter, please stand if you need one. So I'm going to swear your testimony, give this, even with the truth, the whole truth, so help you God.
Thank you all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Tonight, we're here to discuss a revision to a previously issued special use permit for the Long Point Estates Homeowners Association. There was a previous approval last year under S U P case 2023 dash 44 for a special use permit for the expansion of an existing community boating facility in the Long Point Estates community. At the time, the request was to add an additional five boat slips to the existing facility along Hughes Road, bringing the total number of boat slips on site to 10, in addition to the existing boat ramp, which brought each property owner in the neighborhood to have their own boat slip, right? So we're going to talk a little bit more about the, the, the use of the boat ramp in question. As that is the focus of the request this evening. So the revision tonight seeks to allow a limited number of Hammock Watch and Greystone residents, which are two nearby neighborhoods, to utilize the Long Point Estates community boat ramp. And as you can see here, the subject property is highlighted in, in a black pattern. The total acreage is around two acres. This is off of Hughes Road, near the end of Washington Acres Road, and I've highlighted some of the, the neighborhoods nearby. You can see Washington Acres is to the north of the property in question. You have Hammock Watch to the southwest, and then Long Point Estates consists of a lot of the, a lot of the nearby residences. The subject parcels and the surrounding area zone RP residential performance. And here's an aerial of the site. This is a bit dated since this photo was taken, and per the approval from the last special use permit, they did build five additional boat slips for individual property owners at the site. And as you can see, there's an existing boat ramp to the north of those slips. Those were the five that were previously approved, bringing the total on site to 10, which again gives every single owner in the HOA community an individual boat slip, most of which have their own, their own properties, which are for the most part on the water themselves. But this provides boat slips for those, those owners that do not have direct water access. And so here's an, an aerial image with the site plan. As you can see, there's a, there's a fenced in area here, a green area here that's been commonly used for parking. There's parking on the interior. You can see that existing concrete boat ramp. They have a, a covered shelter on site as well. And then directly to the north, you can see the Washington Acres boat ramp. There are some wetlands on the property, which is common for, for coastal area like this. And I also want to point out that a community boating facility as a use is allowed via special use permit by, by the Board of Commissioners. So briefly, I want to talk about what a community boating facility is per the Unified Development Ordinance. A private nonprofit boating facility with navigable waterfrontage, which includes a dock, pier, or launching ramp, which is intended to serve five or more residential units. It must be controlled or owned or controlled by a homeowners association or any type of development association or collective owners group where more than one family has privileges to use the facility. Commercial activities of any kind, including commercial letting of slips to parties that are not residents of the association or development, shall be prohibited. So as I mentioned originally, this special use permit was issued for the residents and property owners of Long Point Estates. Since that time, they have entered into a memorandum of understanding with Hammock Watch and Greystone to essentially create a collective owners group to share in the use of that boat ramp. As moving forward, without these neighborhoods involved, they would, the boat ramp would be underutilized because each owner has their own slip. So this would allow the, that to be used by the neighboring communities. Select neighboring communities. And just to be clear, this will be accessible by limited number of folks in these neighborhoods. But the, the, the facility itself is not growing or changing, so the capacity will remain the same. So here's some trip counts from the last special use permit, just kind of, you know, illustrating that the additional five boat slips at the time equated to around an additional 12 trips per day, which was an additional one trip per peak hour in the AM or PM. They actually did not have a, a trip count generation with the DOT that equaled an approximation for the use of a boat ramp. So the Marina was the closest thing for that. So here's some, some photos of the site from last fall. So you can see there's a, there are very large grass area along Hughes Road. In between that, you see a marsh area that's grown up with vegetation. On the opposite side of this would be those boat slips. And then if we shuffle down the street a bit, we can see the gate that takes you into the boat ramp, boat ramp area. And so when we talk about special use permits, one of the requirements for a special use permit is that it's consistent with the future land use plan designation for that property, which in this case is coastal residential, which is intended to preserve the county's coastal character, and it encourages unencumbered access to public trust coastal waters. And appropriate land uses include single-family residences, community recreation, open space uses, and water-based recreational uses. So this existing facility is, is in direct support of the coastal residential intention to allow water access for those communities and those residents. And so as you can see before you, these are, these are the eight requirements that have to be met for the special use permit to be issued. And then these are the standard conditions for, for a special use permit. But again, there's no proposed changes to the site. It's just a matter of letting limited number of neighboring communities use the underutilized boat ramp moving forward, so that they may have direct water access. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff?
This may be a stupid question, but back up to the, the one, the last slide you were talking about, the conditions. The obligations imposed by this permit will be the responsibility of the property owner. In this case, who is the property owner? The applicant, HOA, or because we've got other residential groups involved, who, who is responsible for damage to this property if allowed access?
The Long Point Estates HOA is the property owner, and to my knowledge, there's no intent to change that status. The agreement they've entered into is not an ownership agreement. It's merely an, an agreement to utilize, to use that property.
Unencumbered usage.
Yes, ma'am.
By the new members.
And they do, and the applicant can speak to this, or the applicant's representative, they do have some kind of restrictions for those users that he'll go over in his presentation.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
So is applicant here?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again this evening. I'm Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington, and I'm representing the Long Point Estates HOA this evening. They are the applicant and the, the property owner. And with me here this evening are, is Ellen Wortman. She's an attorney. She's the regular HOA attorney. And I asked Ellen to be here, and thankfully, she was available to answer any questions that the board may have, and also to make sure I'm speaking correctly as to the HOA Long Point Estates. So the, and Terry Williams, one of our board members is here, and there may be, there may be a, a couple of the board members. But we have a series of slides, Mr. Chairman, and I think that will help explain the request. And if you have any questions along the way, please don't hesitate to, to, to stop, stop me. This is the general vicinity of the Long Point Estates boat ramp property. And here's sort of a close-up of, of the boat ramp property. I know the board members will be familiar with this because last year, late last year, the board allowed my client to build five additional wet slips on the waterway. So the boat ramp that we're talking about tonight is located there as shown. And then just an overall sort of vantage point of everything, that's approximation of the, of the same property. And then, right, the, the yellow star represents the slips that were there previously, and then the blue star is where this board allowed the additional five slips approved in, I believe it was December of 2023. And then to provide some further context, there's the Long Point Estates boat ramp, and then there's the neighboring Washington Acres boat ramp, which is not part of this request at all. It's a, it's a completely different facility. And as you'll see, as you go through the, these slides, they're, they're different users, and it's, it's just, they happen to be next to each other. So here's another view, sort of a street view of the Long Point Estates HOA facility. And then again here, and then to the left of the screen, you can again see the Washington Acres boat ramp. And if I'm not mistaken, I, I don't know that there's any access between the two. I'll maybe let some of the other folks speak to that. But they're, they're separate parking areas, separate, separate areas altogether. Here's just another view looking down Hughes Road. And you can see the gated area shown there in the distance, that's the Long Point Estates, but also outside of the gated area, there's quite a bit of parking available for vehicles and trailers. Here's just another view of that. So Long Point Estates, we provided this just to show you kind of where in proximity the two other neighborhoods that we're asking the board to consider this evening are. You can see Long Point Estates here. That's sort of a generalization of where Long Point Estates is, and I'll, I'll come back to that with a little handout I have. But there's Long Point Estates, and then you can see Highway 17. And Greystone is the first neighborhood that we're asking for the board to consider to allow using the Long Point Estates boat ramp. As I mentioned before, when this board approved, we appreciate the board approving the ability to build those five additional wet slips. My understanding is now everybody within the Long Point Estates HOA now has a, a wet slip either at their lot or at that community slip. So the boat ramp really isn't utilized, if you will, in the same way that a community that simply has a boat ramp. It's certainly convenient to get boats in and out of in an emergency and, or maintenance and that sort of thing. But my understanding is most people are keeping their boats at their slip, which, which makes sense. The Greystone community is shown here with the green, the green star, and we've got the subdivision map here. This is map book 46 at page 40 of the Pender County Registry. And I believe there's representatives of Greystone here this evening. But Greystone consists of 35 lots, and conveniently, they're actually all sort of shown on one map, and, and these are the lots here. And to provide sort of some context, here's the Pender County GIS of Washington Acres shown in sort of the pink color. And you can see that Greystone is really not part of Washington Acres, my understanding. It's in it and surrounded by it, but the Greystone neighborhood is not allowed to use the Washington Acres boat ramp. So they, they don't have access to that. Currently, the, my guess would be if someone were, if this is not allowed tonight, then they would be using a public boat ramp, and that would involve, you know, getting on Highway 17 and either traveling north or south. So in considering this, we do think that there is a benefit to both the Greystone and the Hammock Watch communities of having much more direct access to the water with the boats and not getting out and putting the boat travel trail, trailering traffic on 17. So back to the map, we've got Greystone shown in green, and then Hammock Watch, which is a smaller community, but it's immediately adjacent to Long Point Estates. And again, here's just the general vicinity map of showing that. And then we've got a, here's a map showing the 14 lots in Hammock Watch. There's not one map of all of Hammock Watch, but this map happens to show the 14 lots shown here. A couple of things I would point out with Hammock Watch, it's my understanding that there's a community boating facility for Hammock Watch. So I believe it's nine of those folks are, have slips also at their own facility. And the reason I'm pointing that out is because this really is, I don't think it's going to see like real intense use from Hammock Watch. It would be to allow them to get their boats in and out of in close proximity to their neighborhood also. But of course, we're asking for their ability to, to also use it. As Mr. Brantley mentioned, we are proposing a number of boat ramp rules. The Long Point Estates HOA would be, who would, if, if granted by the board, would be the recipient of the special use permit, and we would be responsible for making sure all the rules are followed. If there's any enforcement issues, that would be to the special use permit applicant. So it would be incumbent on us to make sure that the rules are followed. But we have a number of rules here in addition to any rules that this board might request to be added as conditions, of course. The traffic impacts, we think, would be pretty minimal with this. Like I said, the, there's not a lot of traffic with the boat ramp associated with Long Point Estates. And the other neighborhoods, we don't envision a, a significant amount of traffic impact from this.
So can, can I ask a question? You say you don't expect a significant traffic impact, but looking at this roughly 0.9 tenths acre lot that's gated, how, has there been any calculations or, I guess what I'm trying to get to is you've got 40 on any given day, you've got 35 lots in Greystone?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and five from Hammock Watch, because nine have their own boat slips?
That's my understanding.
So we're looking at 40, 40 units residents. If they all, one Sunday day came and used this boat slip, is there sufficient parking for their vehicle and their trailer either inside that fenced area or a lot for the additional parking outside the fence without having to park along Hughes Road?
No, ma'am. There is not sufficient parking if everybody wants to use the facility at the same time. That's, that's pretty clear. It would be, again, it would be incumbent on us to have rules and regulations. So that, I think in the, I would say the rare case when everybody is trying to use it and working under the assumption that everybody has a boat, which I, I don't think is the assumption.
Which is ludicrous, I know, but just bear with me.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any other places for overflow parking for this facility if you open it up to 40 more residents?
No, no, ma'am. The parking is what's shown. So I, we don't want to misrepresent to the board in any way that if, if everyone who has a pass, if, if approved, has a pass, wants to use the facility at the same time, there's simply not enough parking there. I, I won't speak for Greystone. I understand that there's a representative here who may want to speak. But from what I understand of Greystone, for example, I've been told that there's roughly 29 homes built out, so there's still, still a few empty lots there, and roughly a third or so have boats or kayaks. So I think that's probably, I'm going to guess, that's maybe fairly representative of a, of your typical subdivision. Not everyone is going to have a boat. But a significant number will, for sure. But.
Well, what is the capacity?
Yes, ma'am.
Boat and vehicle and trailer in, in this area, both inside the gate and outside the gate?
Looking back at my notes from the previous hearing, my understanding is within the gate for vehicles is roughly 20 to 22 vehicles within the gate.
Vehicle meaning the?
No.
The, the motor vehicle and the trailer?
No, ma'am. That, just, just the vehicle. Outside of the gate, my understanding is you could have roughly 12 trucks with trailers. I don't know how that translates. I'm going to maybe defer to my client and how they use this on everyday use. But to give you an idea, and I'll go back to the aerial. give you an idea, and I'll go back to the aerial, you can see a vehicle parked there now. I don't know if that, it looks like it's showing a trailer on the, I'd have to go closer to the screen to see. But just to provide an idea of how much space is there now, this, I believe, is showing a vehicle, a white colored vehicle on the spot now.
Ms. Pickles is, I know Washington Acres has been there for years, but it looks significantly smaller, and there's a lot more residents than Washington Acres. How do they navigate that busy weekend?
Yes, sir. And again, my understanding is a lot more people can use Washington Acres boat ramp. That's my understanding, so. But we would be required to keep the parking on site, and if it was an issue, then.
You referenced 10 vehicles in the gate because there's 10 boats going to be in the slips, and they're just going to drive their vehicle down there, not going to bring a trailer. I know that.
Yes, or walk from their house. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. So, but to be clear, there's not 40 parking spaces. There's not enough room for everybody to be using it at one time. But I think the idea or the assumption is that on the vast majority of the days, it's not going to be an issue with parking. Fourth of July weekend, that's probably going to be an issue that they'll have to accommodate and make rules, and maybe not everyone can use it at the same time. So, or busy summer weekend. So that would certainly be something that we would have to work through, but I think other facilities of a similar nature probably have to work through the same issues also. So, let me go back to, so, right. So again, I don't know how many lots are eligible to use the Washington Acres boat ramp, but based upon my limited research, I think it's significantly more than what we're proposing here. The other thing I wanted, I did want to point this out just so we're clear. I've got a handout, and I apologize if this did not make it into the PowerPoint, but if I may, what we've got here in seeking, just wanted to get clarification from my client. What I've handed out is really a two-page handout, and it's got yellow dots on it and red dots on it. And the yellow dots represent the lots within Long Point Estates that are sort of part of the HOA, meaning they, those 23 lots are currently allowed to use the Long Point Estates boat ramp. The red lot, the red dotted lots, and this is where I may defer to the HOA attorney on this, because I'm trying to understand that the, the red dots are sort of, you could say are in Long Point Estates, or they're, D may say they're in Long Point Estates, but they're not part of the HOA, and they're not, they don't have the right to use the boat ramp.
The red dots?
The red dots, yes, ma'am. So when you break down the number of users within Long Point Estates that, who I'm representing, represented by the yellow dots, those are the folks now that can use the boat ramp. And my understanding is all the folks represented by a yellow dot, they have, they have a wet boat slip. So what we're asking the board to consider is to allow 40 additional sort of passes, if you will, from the two neighborhoods, 40 maximum. And it would allow that the folks of Greystone and of Long, of Hammock Watch could utilize the boat ramp, subject to the rules and any conditions that the board puts on that use. And it would be, I think, a significant convenience to those neighborhoods. It would help alleviate traffic on 17 with folks going to the public boat ramp or to another boat ramp. And again, it's something that I think would be beneficial to an under, what is now an underutilized facility. I think, I'm getting near the end of my slides. Talked about traffic. I won't talk too much about the comprehensive plan. It's in the staff report, but I'm glad to do so. I do sort of outline the special use permit criteria here, but I know the board knows those criteria well. Special use permits for community boating facilities are allowed in this district. The, we would contend that this is consistent with the area generally. You really need only look next door to Washington Acres, and you can see there's a fairly similar proposed use happening there now. And what we would be asking for would be similar with what you would see in coastal Pender County and residential post Pender County with boat ramps. And there's really not a lot of boat ramps available, public or private. No new structures are proposed, or subject to any, the rules that we're proposing and any conditions, we would have to comply with all applicable CAMA rules and regulations. And that's, that goes without saying. And then we would, we would ask the board to consider limiting or allowing additional 40 lots within those two subdivisions. And just to conclude the presentation, I'll go, I'm glad to go through any of the particular permits, but again, I'm sorry, any of the particular criteria, but we would contend that the special use permit criteria are met, and this is in some ways a modification to the existing special use permit for the community boating facility to allow the expanded use. And the ordinance does allow, under the community boating facility, for there be sort of a, an organization of, I guess, HOAs to, the way the definition is, would allow you to consider this. Of course, it's up to the board. And we would contend that there is sufficient parking for what we're proposing in the vast majority of instances, but like other uses, I do want to say that, as I said before, you could not park everybody there at the same time. And then that would be something that we certainly would have to work around because we would be required to do that and not to be in violation of the special use permit. So that would be something we would have to address with either times of use or other rules and regulations to limit use on busy days. And talked about the previous special use permit. And then again, it's, we would respectfully contend that for the scope of the proposed expansion, that there would be sufficient area there to accommodate that. But of course, we appreciate the board's consideration of that, and we're certainly glad to listen to any comments, questions, concerns, or additional conditions the board may want to consider. I think I've said everything, Mr. Chairman, that I had intended to say. I appreciate the board's time. I'm glad to answer any questions, and I think there's some folks here to speak in favor of it from, from Long Point.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
I'm out of this time.
So I have one from Mr. Justin. So we've had a, had a boat ramp that's had trouble with their erosion control. Is that one of the conditions of this, that they have to maintain the parking, parking lot to a standard where the runoff doesn't run into the creek? Kind of like, you know, the one down the street, we had problems with, with their, keeping their parking lot up with this much traffic, it's going to cause wear and tear than what, more than what they're used to now. Can we put conditions on maintaining that where it doesn't pollute the waterways?
I think so, sir, if the applicant's willing to agree to that.
We don't want there to be any issues with that. So certainly glad to agree to a condition in that regard.
Any other questions for Steph or the applicant?
I have a question for Steph. Would it be appropriate to ask for a condition that the property owner shall ensure parking is controlled in such a manner that would preclude any obstruction to the roadway of Hughes Road that goes by it?
Yes, ma'am. I think that would be appropriate, and I think the applicant would agree.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, you know, Hughes Road is a state road. And so that's not the applicant's property.
Yes, I understand that, but they are responsible for the way that the vehicles are parked along the roadway easement to ensure that there's no intrusion or incursion onto the roadway itself that would cause an unsafe condition. Because you know as well as I do, on Fourth of July weekend, people are parking every which way.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
And that's, that's my only concern, and I don't know how they would wish to word the condition, but just have a condition such that the homeowner, the property owner, the homeowner group would be responsible for ensuring that there's no hazardous obstructions to traffic flow on Hughes Road at or near their property.
Yes, ma'am.
To make a unsafe condition.
I think that would be reasonable.
Thank you.
Son of a, sir?
Yes, sir. Alton Levesque?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow board members that have been able to speak with you tonight. My name is Alton Levesque, 655 Hughes Road, Hampstead. I'm here tonight in opposition to this special use permit for, we believe the Long Point Board of Directors does not have authority to make this revision request due to restrictions on the deed. I have a copy of the deed, and I have some that I can provide to you. Exhibit A of the deed, the last paragraph states, "The use of the boat ramp and pier located on Track B-1 and repairing area adjoining shall be restricted to the owners of the lots in Long Point Estates and the owners of boat slips, parking spaces, docks adjoining Track B-2, or those that may be added on or joining B-2 in the future." We have deeds as well, and our deeds have restrictions as well. When Robert, when Raymond Hughes created all the, he owned all that land. He didn't want, did not want an HOA to be able to come in and change the character of the property. And so what he did is he wrote restrictions into the deed to prevent an HOA from overriding those restrictions. They exist in their deed today. I have restrictions in my deed on who can use my boat ramp as well, we all do, and I like you to continue to honor that restriction in the deed.
Where do you live?
Hughes Road, right up the street from the boat ramp.
Okay, so you, are you a red dot or a yellow dot?
I didn't see any dots.
He's a Washington Acres.
A Washington Acres.
I'm Washington Acres. I'm, I'm the boat ramp right next to it.
Oh, okay.
Long Point State has the same.
And Long Point State has the same. This is Long Point Estates deed. Thank you. Appreciate it. This is, this is the property in question that has the restriction to only the own, property owners.
I'm with you. I was just, okay, so you are, you are not a Long Point resident?
No, I'm not. I'm not a Long Point. I am vested in interest because I have access to the boat ramp adjacent to this property, and I'm negatively impacted as a result of this challenge.
How so?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to run out of time.
Because you being a Washington Acres resident, you don't.
This is the weekends down there.
So that's parking on the side of the road?
Right, correct. And it's also, they are, they, for the last few years, they have been violating the community boating facility by selling permits, conducting commercial operations on that ramp. I would like, I have a Facebook post where they have advertised that they are open for business.
They who?
Long Point Estates.
Long Point Home Owners Association?
Yes, ma'am. If I may approach, I can, I can share that with you.
Hand it to the clerk.
Oh, yeah.
Pass it to us.
And if I, and if I may read it, this is.
We'll grant you a few extra seconds since you.
I ate up some.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. This is dated December 19th, 2021, Facebook. Good morning and Happy New Year. We received feedback that several folks are having challenges in receiving timely responses and information for our HOA property management company called Joe Go, excuse me. We sincerely apologize for the inconvenience and decided to step and assist directly with the process of ramp pass process. If you are interested in retaining a boat ramp pass to our private boat, private ramp, please feel free to send an email to Long Point Estates Board of Directors, and it's their email there. And then the next paragraph is, "Long Point Estates will be offering for sale a very limited number of yearly passes to their private boat ramp. LPE offers this, offers a private boat ramp with gated access leading to the ICW. You do not need to live in Washington Acres to obtain a pass. Passes are first come, first served. Please contact the LPE HOA Property Management Company for more." If you read paragraph four of the memorandum of understanding that's submitted, the HOAs are not coming together. Long Point Estates is selling individual licenses to individuals. They are customers of Long Point Estates HOA. They're trying to continue this.
Thank you.
Stephen Neal?
I'll be quick. Thank you for letting me speak. In the event of Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, any weekend, basically, it was mentioned before that in the event of overcrowding on the street, the only solution I heard was that the three HOAs will come together and figure out a solution. And I don't think that is attainable. It's not realistic. And how do you coordinate something like that without people just arguing? It's just going to cause a complete disaster. So that's, that's my point. That's all I have to say.
Brian Moore?
Brian Moore, 145 Circle Drive, Hampstead. I am part of the Washington Acres community. I frequent the boat ramp probably once a week, on average. I know how the traffic is down there. It gets busy. It's, it's doable, but it gets very busy. An additional 40 is going to make it a nuisance. On top of that, Greystone is 1.7 miles from the boat ramp. And that 1.7 miles, I believe there's eight 90-degree blind-hand turns on a small road that is filled with children. And the Hughes Road in front of the boat ramp, there is nine children that live there. It's very limited. It's a very nice community. The extra traffic is going to be a problem. Somebody's going to get hurt. I don't want to see that. On top of all the traffic, the nuisance that it's going to cause, they've also built nine ramps, slips, I'm sorry, across from our boat ramp. Well, now the access is limited coming and going out of the ramps. So to add an additional 40 more people coming and going out of the adjacent ramp on top of the large volume that we have, it is, it's going to be a challenge. It's going to cause problems. There's going to be incidences. I don't know the solution, but I don't believe we should add it until we can maybe work together, but I don't believe that's an option either. So huge safety factors in mind, and I am thoroughly, thoroughly against granting an additional 40. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Piaszek?
Good evening, board. Paul Piaszek, 104 Circle Drive, Washington Acres. We all want everybody to boat and commute and have fun on the water. Saturdays is a major problem down at the boat ramps, both of them. Mainly, their ramp is underutilized. I think our HOA approached them to try to use some of their parking. I don't know what happened with that, but there's parking all along the streets going on on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays. If we add another 40 people there, or even 20, it's going to cause some issues. One of the things we do want to do is be friendly neighbors. We just want everybody to abide by the deeds that are written. We have a unique situation with Washington Acres, Long Point Estates. They have deeds written in there, verbiage to prevent this, and it's for a reason, because it's a unique community. I moved there for that reason, deed at water rights. It's unique. It's not Sloop Point. It's not another marina where there's 50 people waiting. It's very nice. It's a great thing to use. We don't want it to be commercialized. That's all I got. Can I yield my time to Alton?
Not, no, sir.
No, sir.
I'm sorry.
I tried, buddy.
Very good. Liam DePore? Not sure. And by the way, I should have said earlier, I mispronounced your name, and it's nothing personal.
I was impressed with that last one you said.
Yes, good evening. My name is Liam DePore. I'm a resident in the Greystone community, was one of the early residents, and moved in in 2000. Was one of the early residents and moved in in 2010. The original developers of Greystone, Long Point, and Hammocks Watch, Land Company of Pender, Jerry Reeves, JW Fussell, and David Greer, had intended for the use of the boat ramp to be extended to just those three neighborhoods. And it was all in place legally, but for the exception of some paperwork that the attorney at the time, James Brandon, did not file with the bank with which their developers had their mortgage. That bank subsequently foreclosed and was assumed by another bank. And we worked diligently, the HOA, myself, and Mike Griffin at the time. He was the president, I was the secretary on the HOA board. And unfortunately, we were unable to, to work with the, with, with everything, and the ownership reverted to Long Point Estates. So what this current agreement is proposing is really a revision to the, or reversion to the prior intent of extending access to Greystone and Hammocks Watch to the boat ramp. During that original transaction, the property was originally 3.21 acres. 0.21 acres was carved off and sold or deeded to Washington Acres. So their boat ramp actually includes some of the original property. So their, their access has been improved through prior transactions on this lot. And that was around about 2010 timeframe, I believe. So that's, that's just my point. I think, I think we're all cognizant of what's going on with traffic in the area, but honestly, with 40 extra boats compared to, or up to that many compared to how many people use Washington Acres, it is a drop in the bucket compared to the property. And it was also a part of the original intent of the development, that we be extended access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsey Warren?
Hello, Lindsey Warren. I live in Greystone, 145 Thornton Drive. Would appreciate consideration of our request just based on the history of the understanding that, you know, we had access to use this, knowing that that space is underutilized and the traffic concerns going into public boat ramps. We just feel like that, you know, it's, it's a definite, you know, advantage to be able to use it so close to our neighborhood, so would appreciate the consideration.
Phil Cordero?
Good evening, my name is Phil Cordero. I'm at 230 Thornton Drive in Greystone. Just a couple of comments. I wanted to remind everyone that I think we get increasingly concerned about traffic on 17 in every trip that we're sending to the underutilized Long Point Estates' boat ramp is one trip that we're taking off 17 because my family and myself and all the other users of this boat ramp are currently using the Lewis Road Boat Ramp Facility, which I think we're all aware is next to Sloop Point, and it's very, very heavily utilized. So we're taking, we're not creating any additional trips. We're just taking them off of 17 and moving them onto a local road within our community. The other thing is, there's about 100 parcels within the Washington Acres neighborhood. And as you can see, their facility is actually about one-third the size of ours when you consider the total acreage. And so if you've got 100 homes using that, that's much smaller of a parcel versus only 40 on ours, I, I think that we need to think about the parking and, you know, whether or not maybe Washington Acres is creating some of that traffic. Because again, they have 100 homes, about 100 homes in their neighborhood versus only 40 that we're asking to be on the Long Point Estates' boat ramp. And of course, the ultimate guide to parking is that you issue the passes on a first come, first served basis. So if we determine that, you know, the capacity of the boat ramp and the parking, et cetera, is only, you know, let's say 25, then the first 25, you know, permit holder, homeowners within the group that applied, then they would just get first some, first serve permits, and then the rest would have to wait until there is vacancies. Other than that, again, we sincerely appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Coley Cordero?
Hello, my name is Coley Cordero, and I'm representing the Greystone community this evening. I am a fisherman and a mother of a small child. I own a 14-foot John boat. During this whole process, I've been thinking a lot about the access and where you kinda get out into the water and at Safe Harbor, going down to Lewis Road, right beside Sloop Point. I tried it recently, and it's like getting on an on-ramp in I-95. I got ran over, and it was very scary. So I immediately turned the boat around, put it back on the trailer, and headed back home. This access will obviously provide a lot of recreational value to myself and my family and the community. And that's why we moved to Hampstead. We came here to be on the water, fish, clam, oystering, following all the rules that are provided by the state of North Carolina and enjoying the water that is around us. The folks that are here that are against this, maybe being Washington Acres, we ride by that boat ramp daily, including Saturdays and Sundays. Frequently see traffic on the road because of the Washington Acres ramp. Long Point Marina is, I've only seen it filled up one time. So we're talking about 40 permits, that, you know, the owners of the boat ramp and all of us being there at the same time, I haven't seen it but one time in a few years. So just kinda wanna put that in context as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Darryl Collins?
Good evening. My name's Darryl Collins. I live at the First House in Greystone.
Can you speak up, sir?
My name's Darryl Collins. I live at the First House in Greystone. It's 18 Thornton. When I first moved in, I wanna start with this that's been eating at me since, literally since I got back from the trip. When I first moved in, the real estate agent promised me I'd have boat access. And I, when I found out that it wasn't deeded, I went after that real estate agency. And a lot of our homeowners have been promised that as well. These communities were built by a group of builders. They were all built together for our access. And through the time that I've been there since 2017, I've been using that boat ramp, paying a nominal fee, and everything seemed to be working out fine. I have never, and I have probably one of the biggest boats, and I probably use it more than anybody here. And I'm gonna tell you, I have never seen parking ever be a problem for us. And anybody in Washington Acres that has any complaint about parking is complaining about themselves. Our community doesn't use up everything in Long Point. We barely even, I have never had to park outside the gate with my boat and trailer. The outside parking is given to us when we had the ramp passes for us to invite friends to park their individual cars there, so they never even have a trailer behind them. And there's, there's a good amount of distance between the main road and where the fence is where they pull up. And, and what I'm trying to say is that taking away our access for boating rights does put us back on the water where we have to go to the state boat ramp. I own a very big boat, and it costs a lot of gas. If you're talking about environmental impact in general, a lot of us are so upset about this that we're gonna start looking for a different way to get another boat ramp built, which means that's a big environmental impact. I've talked to Jason already about it, and he's told me about not messing with the seagrass. Everybody's really upset. Going down to the public boat ramp, it's, it's easily 12 to 14 miles, towing my boat, putting my boat in, driving my boat back down to the end of South Topsail, how much gas does that use? When, when we talk about going to the boat ramp and our access, us using our side of that ramp, for all the years that I've been doing this, I, I take my boat down Washington Acres Road. I don't go weaving through Hughes or any of the other roads to get there. I have to, partially because of how high up it is in the air, but I have anyway just because the traffic going around the corners. I am very concerned about everybody else in the community and kids playing. But we have other things going on, and I wanna say that, that, that this isn't something new. Everybody here has been dealing in, we have not, the picture is showing all the cars parked outside of there. We haven't been using the boat ramp all this year. So if those pictures were made this year, that is Washington Acres parking out on those roads. So, thank you, thank you.
Suzette Collins?
I believe just gave my name, Ben Moulthan.
Yeah, I, we were just confirming that, yeah. We're not done yet, sir, but yeah, we can call you up now.
Good evening, Ben Moulthan, 77 Thornton Drive. Here tonight to voice my support for the permit. I'm a resident property owner of the Greystone community, also an HOA board member. Sharing of Long Point's underutilized boat ramp is consistent with the original plans for these neighborhoods. Many of us have illegitimate, illegitimate access stated on our deeds. We know it's not legal, not legally binding. Three neighborhoods are sister neighborhoods, originally developed by the same developer, and they, who intended for this access at that location. As my neighbor Chip just mentioned, those pictures that were shown were during the time that we were paying a nominal fee. I believe this is all to get in compliance with the UDO. That was actually my truck in one of the pictures, so that's an average use day. Greystone, 35 lots, 29 homes. Less than a third of us are boat owners and kayakers, so, you know, a fraction of the 40. We do traverse, you know, talking about traffic, we all drive and traverse Center Drive, Hughes Road, Washington Acres Road daily. We walk, ride bikes, have children. Current water access is north on 17 through the 210 and 17 intersection. You know, it's a 25-minute drive without traffic, a couple hours on the weekends if so. So this permit will actually reduce boat traffic on 17 and the pressure on Sloop Point Road, which we know is pressured from all over the state. I think we all have friends in Raleigh that come here on the weekends. So just, yeah, thank you for your time this evening and considering this positive impact to our community. Thank you.
Terry Williams?
Hi, I'm Terry Williams. I have property on Washington Acres Road 11B. We're in the process of building a home down here. And when we purchased property down here a couple of years ago, that was the first thing that appealed to us was the marina area and the way that the boats were down there, very picturesque. It looked like a New England town almost. It was so, it was so charming. But the, the, the point, I guess, that someone made to me the other day, and I'm, I'm a native North Carolinian, and my grandmother used to come down here spot fishing. So I mean, you know, it's kind of in my, in my blood to, to appreciate the, the property down here, the land down here. But the, as, as one person pointed out to me, that marina and those ramps down there, people have been putting their boats down there for a long time, okay? They put some electronic gates down there, you know, a few years back. But, you know, the precedence has been set. And the boating community and the fishing community, they've been putting their boats in there for a very long time. And it's part of the tradition of Washington Acres and Intercoastal Waterway. And I think when you start with a regulation, and oftentimes, it's, it's for the betterment of the community. But then at the same time, I think you need to temper that with your consideration of what your heritage of your community is and what the people are expecting, you know, as citizens. Thank you.
Barry Barber?
Barry Barber, 128 Circle Drive, resident of Washington Acres. For over 30 years, there's been some false information spread about tonight about the developers of those communities. I personally was a friend of Raymond Hughes, who was the original developer of Washington Acres and Long Point Estates. He developed both those communities, and each one of them had a private boat ramp. It's written, it's not a homeowners association rule. It's written into the deed legally in the deed. Those ramps are for the exclusive and sole use of members of those two subdivisions. So I'm not even sure how this zoning request is. It's not even legal. The deed specifically states they cannot be used by anyone else. So that eliminates one of the issues on your agenda, the legality. Secondly, we've talked about the commercial use. These gentlemen are proposing to sell a number of slips. The new communities do have no rights or rules. They're simply selling passes. If that's not a commercial application, I'm not sure what is. They've created a memorandum of understanding to kind of skirt that issue. But the bottom line is, Long Point Estates is simply selling passes to other communities for monetary value. They're basically making 100 grand a year or so from that. So that's a commercial enterprise, which is also illegal in the community boat ramp standards that you've put up here tonight. The lady mentioned parking. There's approximately 15 spaces for trucks and trailers that are in the Long Point Estates' property. If that's that close, maybe it's 16, maybe it's 14, but approximately 15 in that range. So now you're proposing adding another 40 or so? So yes, parking is gonna be a problem. I've heard people in the Greystone community mention some unscrupulous developers that promised them rights. And I know that's true. I know that happened, and I do feel for them. That's, that's wrong, and it shouldn't have happened. But that should not infringe upon the rights of, the property rights of people who bought in good faith in the communities expecting the restrictions in our deeds to be honored, the legal restrictions in the deeds. That's, that's all we're talking about. That should be the end of this. It's not legal what they're asking. So I do, and I totally acknowledge boating access is a problem in Hampstead. It's a problem all up and down North Carolina. That's why people who bought in Washington Acres and bought in Long Point Estates did that. They, we realize it's an exclusive community with exclusive use of the ramp for members of those communities only. That's what we paid for. That's what our deeds say legally. And I think that's what should be continued. I'm not sure how it goes much beyond the legality of the deed. Everyone in Long Point Estates signed their deeds just like I did. That's a legal contract. They should be held to that contract, just like I expect to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the signups, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Signup List, can I be two minutes just to kinda...
Do it.
I was originally owner of Greystone, the beginning of Greystone.
That's the pleasure of the board.
He's been here the whole...
Let him speak.
Okay. Come up and speak, state your name.
I'm Scott Hayden.
Were you sworn, sir?
Sir, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I was here. I just wanna clear up a couple of things, not take much time. Thank you so much for allowing me, even though I didn't make the list. Original owner of Greystone, been some misconceptions. I don't know if it's because people came in after the original Greystone or not. Here's the deal. Builder used his own attorney. Attorney screwed up. We got screwed out of our rights. All we're doing, and Long Port, Long Point is the only one that can allow this to happen, for clarification, because the only reason they still have that and the bank doesn't is because it was deeded to them, and the bank couldn't take it from them. We had a handshake agreement with Long Point for years that allowed the original owners of two other subdivisions that lost their water rights to use that for a nominal fee. For me, for years, it was 350 bucks. There has never been anybody, to the best of my knowledge, when I park there, and I use it all the time, parking on the road out there because we don't have to. It's never full. You go out there July 4th, Memorial Day, Labor Day, never a problem. So all we are asking from the board, your mercy on this, to correct a mistake, the stroke of a pen that an attorney did not do, to give us the same rights that we're entitled to that Long Point has and the other two divisions does. That's all we're asking for and praying for here is to not go through the brat race of the public ramps because we lost the rights that we're entitled to. Our property values have already taken a hit. We've already lost our water rights. Our property has taken a hit because of that. And I'm sorry for y'all in Washington Acres. We don't affect any of that. Y'all's people, because Washington Acres, Washington, I'm sorry, Washington Acres people, they don't sell enough passes. You have to have a special pass to park in the gated. The other people have to park on the road. That's not true. Okay. Well, the evidence is they got vast more houses than we got and vastly less land. So you make your conclusion on who's parking on the road and who's not. There's a picture. You don't see but one truck parking on Long Point.
No, that makes the deed. Deed is legal.
If the deed was legal when we signed, the attorney messed up and didn't do his right. We had, we had to sign an agreement not to sue him as owners. It's in the paperwork. Y'all can research it if you like, I promise you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is all.
Sure enough.
May I ask a question of Attorney Nichols?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't understand. Why does, why are there so many people in Long Point Estates who were not members of HOA?
I asked the same thing. That's why I asked Ellen Mortman to be here, because I had a, I don't understand the background as to why some of the lots, my understanding is the way it was developed never became part of the covenants. So I can't explain it, but that's how, that's my understanding of the current state of affairs, that there's a number of lots that just aren't part of the HOA, or they're not, they don't, I don't think they pay dues, I don't think they're part of the covenants. But I did want to answer that question, but I wanted to add something at the appropriate time.
But thank you for providing this because it shows that roughly half of Long Point Acres does not have water access, or at least is not a member of the HOA.
Yes, ma'am. Now, some of, of course, some of those folks are on the water, so they may have a pier or they have the ability to have a pier, in which case I don't know that they really need the boat ramp. But yes, ma'am, I didn't understand it myself, and like I said, was figuring it out today and didn't get a chance to put that in the presentation, but from what I understand, that's accurate. Twenty-three HOA lots have access to the boat ramp.
That's similar up the street in Old Point. Old Point property owners that have property adjacent to the water do not have deeded access to the, what is it, Harbor Village Jock Club Marina. They don't have deeded access to.
Because they're on the water.
Because they're on the water. There's only three of these lots, looking at this map, that are on the water that don't have access or don't have rights to the boat ramp. Why those three, I don't know.
And there's more than that.
Mr. Chairman.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
This is water here.
Yeah, that was that.
And that's water there.
That's not water.
Yeah, the end of the creek is right there, that's his property.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I add something? It's spoken, speaking with my client and hearing the comments, we would like to reduce the request from forty passes to twenty-five.
I was fixing to ask that question because in the original presentation, wasn't it a much less number? I remember reading twenty or twenty-five somewhere in the past.
I don't recall, Mr. Chairman, on this particular item, but I would say that from what I understand, from my client, we likely wouldn't even sell the forty, I say sell, I mean provide for the, provide for the other neighborhoods a, the forty passes. So the twenty-five is a more reasonable number. It also significantly lessens the impact on parking. It's probably about a thirty-five percent reduction, forty to twenty-five would be about a thirty-five percent reduction. And like I said, the, a number of the lots in Hammocks Watch, they have the wet slips. And from what I understand from the Greystone folks, not everyone has a boat anyway. And as far as the issue of, this is not, we would respectfully contend this is not a commercial use in the sense of it's not open to the public, it would be very limited, and of course, there has to be a dues or a fee associated with that. There's costs associated with it, there's insurance, there's upkeep, there's maintenance, there's, you're expanding, you would be expanding the scope of it. So yes, there would be a monetary component to it, but that's true of any HOA with dues and that sort of thing. So, but the idea is not to have a, it's not to have a commercial boat ramp there, it's to accommodate these two other neighborhoods that otherwise are not going to have access to a boat ramp. And we think it would benefit them, it would benefit us in the sense that we could make better use of the ramp and also plan for maintenance, upkeep, and just allow better use of it. And you heard some of the testimony about historical or customary use, but in any event, we understand and realize that the only use allowed by that ramp today is by the Long Point Estates owners. The only board that can expand that is this board, and so that's why we're here asking for this board's consideration. Can we, are we, can we be allowed or are we allowed to expand in a limited capacity to allow these two other neighborhoods to make limited use of it? And we think there would be a lot of benefit to that, so we appreciate the time and consideration of the request.
Does the twenty-three residents in Long Point, will they pay the same fee, if you want to call it a fee or registration, as the ones from the other two subdivisions?
I would have to ask my client, but I don't. Theirs are like the, I guess you would say the HOA dues, so this would be boat ramp, boat ramp pass holder dues, I guess is how you would characterize it, but it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be paying the same amount as a lot owner in Long Point. They're, is it monthly or annual or quarterly? Annual dues, so it's not.
So a portion of that dues goes towards the boat ramp maintenance, I'll assume now?
I believe it would have to.
I mean, to make it not look like a commercial organization, I would think you would need to charge everybody the same price. I mean, that's just my.
Okay. I don't know if anyone from the HOA would like to speak to any of those issues, but sure, this is the president of the Long Point Estates HOA.
Is he considered?
Chet Willis.
Is he considered applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chet, if you'd just introduce yourself.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Chet Willis, currently the president of the HOA at Long Point Estates. First of all, our intent is not to create problems by doing this. It's not completely arbitrary that it's Greystone and Hammocks Watch, because we understand, even though we weren't part of that, there's some bad history there, and we feel like that they're the folks, if we're going to extend this offer, that's where it should go. The last thing we want to do is create traffic problems and, because we live there as well. We just are underutilized, we have some excess capacity, and we'd like to help some of the following, surrounding communities. I think twenty-five passes, if you did the math of the number of people in Hammocks Watch and the number of lots in Greystone, and you factor some percentage that don't have boats against the people who, Hammocks Watch, you don't, they have their own boat slips like we do. It's just twenty-five, I don't know that we'd sell twenty-five passes, but we do sell them, and when we say sell, we do that because we have a couple hundred feet of bulkhead, we have docks, we have the ramp, we have upkeep of those two acres approximately. It's, it's a very, whatever we charge, it will be a fair number, and it's not decided at this point, this is something that the whole board has to discuss as far as.
I get the question, why wouldn't you charge the same thing or a pro rata amount for the upkeep of the facilities to keep it from seeming as if this is a profit enterprise?
Right. Well, there is a reserve factor that comes in in the event of a storm, of course, none of those facilities are insured, you know, if hurricane comes through. We hope to build up a reserve to cover that contingency. We do pay annual HOA dues. It's, in the event of shortfalls, we would be assessed. Not a regularly scheduled HOA due, we would have a special assessment to all of the owners in Long Point Estates, and only Long Point Estates, not this other communities.
The HOA boat ramp dues?
It's not broken out. We pay, we pay one annual HOA homeowner's fee. If, what I'm saying is if that doesn't cover the upkeep on these facilities or damage to those facilities, because as Matt's mentioned earlier, we're responsible for that, that would, we would pay that out of pocket by way of a special assessment.
So with your current structure, if you charged a thousand dollars a year, say, for each resident, how much of that thousand dollars is set aside for the maintenance, for the grass keeping, the upkeep of the fence, the upkeep of the docks currently?
Right now, it goes into a general fund, but that's something that we could be more than willing to listen to suggestions. If you're, what I think you're getting at is you would like to see some, some or all of those fees be dedicated to that boating facility.
Right now, it looks like you're maintaining, you're going to be maintaining your boat ramp off of the memberships or whatever you want to call it that you're selling to the.
Or building your reserves, and I'm kind of like our chair here, it would be way more palpable to me if, as you say, you have sympathy for the Gray Watch and the other community that you feel may have been built out of some rights, if they were being charged and/or assessed the same amount as your.
The residents.
As your homeowners. Otherwise, if you're just selling it access for a some certain, why are you limiting it to Gray Watch? You know, why wouldn't people in Burgall have an opportunity to access this opportunity for the boat? Do you see what I'm saying?
I do. I mean, it's proximity and history, I mean.
And I'm just playing the devil's advocate by saying that, but, you know, unless, if we're trying to get away from it being a money-making proposition, and then too, I don't really understand in light of this Facebook advertisement that appears to be a solicitation for selling boat ramp access, how many of these are outstanding? And if twenty-five additional members to this Long Point HOA are permitted, does that preclude anybody that had previously purchased and currently holds access to this boat ramp? That was.
We are not currently, well, we're not currently selling passes. That's, we haven't.
How many people, I guess maybe I should ask this, how many people outside of Long Point HOA currently have access to use the boat ramp, having paid an amount?
Zero.
Different from what your homeowners.
Zero.
Okay, all right. So what was this all about?
That's from, when it came to my attention.
Twenty-twenty-one, December twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-three.
When it came to my attention that the ramp was being used by members other than Long Point Estates, I told them to stop doing that. It's not allowed, and my understanding is they stopped doing it, which would have been.
It's, I can't hear, really.
Can we keep it down to the honest, please?
And do, and I've represented Long Point Estates on a very limited basis, really since the, I was before you all in twenty-twenty-three for the expansion. In the context of representing them, when I learned about the others, I guess historically using the ramp, I said you can't do that under the Pender County zoning ordinance, you need to stop doing that, and my understanding is they stopped doing it. So correct me if I'm wrong, they haven't had anybody do it since, I don't know when.
I'm not sure when. We haven't, probably haven't collected any fees. I hate to say I may give you bad information, but I suspect it was the beginning of twenty-twenty-three, maybe. And as soon as we were informed that this is not, it's not legal, we stopped, and we had informed everybody that we wouldn't be selling passes until we had a chance to opportunity to come for you and hopefully get the blessing to do that again. So as soon as we found out that we were not compliant, we stopped. And I'd have to say, we get calls daily about when can we do it again, and we just have to tell them we don't know.
And that's really why we're here, to see if the board will allow the use by others to resume under this, at this point, if it was allowed by the board, I would say the benefit of it is there would be a special use permit in place, which would be a clear enforceable framework with conditions that would set out all the parameters, in which case we would ask for simply twenty-five additional.
How can you ask for twenty-five when you're limiting access to a specific group, i.e. Greystone and Watch, what is it, which may have more?
Yes, ma'am.
Folks than twenty-five. And I'd like to ask Trey a question.
I would assume you'd do a lottery? How would you determine, how would you determine twenty-five?
First come, first served or lottery, or I don't have.
I think the fair thing to do would be to look back at the folks that had passes in the past and offer it to them. I don't, I don't think.
How would that work when in fact the folks that had passes in the past?
Some were not part of Greystone and Hammocks Watch?
Yeah.
That only those that were in Greystone or Hammocks Watch. We, the only pass holders that we would have would be from those two communities. We don't, we don't think or know that we'll even have twenty-five folks step up for the reasons we pointed out earlier. Hammocks Watch has a total of, I think, five folks that don't have direct water access, and I don't know that all five have a boat. And then the Greystone community, twenty-nine developed lots out of thirty-five. I'm just guessing, but I don't know that we would have twenty of those that would be interested in the past. So, but those are the only two.
If they were, you would really need to have an opportunity to allow them.
Yes, the twenty-five was, is really just to have a look at it, and we're fairly certain that forty would not be a parking problem, but twenty-five, if it allays any concerns with surrounding communities. If we had excess of twenty-five that wanted them, we wouldn't be able to sell those. It would be on a lottery basis, as I believe the chairman mentioned.
Mr. Nichols, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We've heard from Washington Acres residents who have deeded exclusive water rights. What is the situation with the Long Point deeds?
I don't, I don't know, that deed was brought.
Are there deeded exclusive water rights?
Well, I, that deed was brought to my attention.
Now, I'm talking about anybody that has a yellow dot on this exhibit that has access to this boat dock, do they have deeded exclusive rights?
Well.
To this boat dock?
As members of the Long Point Estates HOA, they have access to the Long Point Estates HOA common property.
Property deed, as do the folks in Washington Acres, does the Long Point Estates homeowners that are yellow, does their deed specify that they have exclusive rights to utilize that boat slip? Sir, I'm not talking to you, really and truly, I'm not, and I'm tired of the chatter.
Commissioner Newton, I do not know the answer to that question. I'm going to ask if perhaps, Ellen, do you know the answer to that question as to how the, how those deeds actually read in Long Point or?
Come up with the mic, please.
Because the thing concerns me from a legal perspective, if in fact that clause exists in the Long Point Estates deeds, how, what right would we have then to go forward and say, okay, irregardless of what these deeds and any, irregardless of this exclusive nature of these water rights in this community, go ahead, open the door.
Understood. So I think what you're referring to, if I'm correct, is the individual deeds of the individual lot owners?
Yes.
Okay. And so I, my recollection of what those say is some of them give them individual assignments of boat slips, but none of them talk about the boat ramp. So they, they give them membership in the HOA itself, and then the HOA itself owns that real property to which that boat ramp. which that boat ramp is attached or sits on. And then some of them were given deeded boat slip access, which has been a separate topic of much discussion amongst the community about whether that's legal or not. But whoever drafted up those deeds did give them some specific boat slip assignments and the exclusive use of certain boat slips. But I have not reviewed any deeds. I've not reviewed all of them. Obviously, there are a lot of them. But I've not reviewed any deeds that specifically give them exclusive use of the boat ramp.
So just for example, and I'm not going to get too far further down in the weeds, but these property owners in Long Point Estates that have, are on the water, that are the red dots, they're red dots because they have a boat slip on their property.
I don't know why they are red dots. There are, my understanding is four waterfront lots that have boat slips or docks on their own property that are individual docks.
Okay.
But what I've seen, when I've gone back through all their HOA documents, is there were plat maps recorded, there was an original declaration recorded annexing the first few lots into Long Point Estates. And then the annexation kind of went two lots at a time, one lot at a time. And it was no longer the developer annexing lots into the HOA, but rather the individual property owners who had purchased their lots from the developer. I believe that coincided with the bank foreclosure and other things that happened. And I just don't believe that the HOA fully developed as the neighborhood was developing. So it became a situation where after a certain period of time, what you see is certain lots voluntarily joining the HOA and voluntarily becoming annexed into the HOA. But there was not a master pud type scheme where the entire neighborhood was put into an HOA like you would see today if, you know, developer came and applied for that right to do so. So it's, it is very confusing, but we've got 23 lots within the HOA. Again, of those, 19 have slips in community boating facilities and four have slips attached to individual piers that come off their waterfront property.
So when, everything that you just said to us, you're referring to Long Point Estates?
Yes.
As distinguished and distinct from Washington Acres property owners who have deeded exclusive rights?
Yes. And I believe that the discussion about the exclusive rights had to do with the common area itself, not the individual lots owned by the individuals within Long Point Estates. Thank you.
One more question. I trust your legal acuity, having had many cases with you in the past. Do you see any reason that we couldn't allow this legally?
I do not. If anything, I think it's a totally separate issue, but I do not see any reason why the special use permit could not be approved as been applied for with respect to Long Point Estates.
And having heard Washington Acres property owners talk about their deeds and their deed restrictions and their exclusive rights, that doesn't in any way impact this homeowners' association on Long Point?
I don't, I don't believe it does to the extent that, again, what Long Point Estates is asking for is a special use permit for its community boating facility. Now, whether or not Washington Acres has an issue with Long Point Estates head to head on some other issues, you know, I don't know. I have not investigated the validity of that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
But certainly you've had more opportunity to review the documents and deed restrictions than certainly we have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for the applicant or staff? If not. Do we have a motion for or to deny?
I just got some discussion. I'm trying to wrap my head around this. That's a pretty significant amount of property when compared to the other boat ramp. I just don't, I'm struggling with that private property and the owners of that private property not being able to do what they want to with it and with a reasonable means. You know, if I was a part of the Long Point folks and I wanted to have a limited amount of users to use that, I mean, why should that be the government telling, telling people? I just don't, I have a problem with that. I understand both sides. I do. But, and I understand the difficult, the difficulty of boat access in Pender County. I wish there were some more public ramps, too. I've used Sluke Point. I use Wrightsville Beach a lot, but I have to do it at four o'clock in the morning. But I'm trying to, the thing about it with me is Washington Acres has been using theirs for years and has significantly less property. And I can't recall of any major problems that they've had. I would be in favor of a very limited amount of usage from the Long Point side. I mean, I don't even know why we're here talking about that. I mean, I like the idea of private property owners being able to do what they want to within the guidelines of not causing pollution or anything like that. But I would move, I would make a motion to move for approval.
How are we talking about 25? Are we talking about?
That's what I was getting ready to say.
With the stipulation of a limited amount of usage, not, I mean, not to go over a certain amount. And then it begs the question, how are you going to enforce that?
With the parking stickers, I would imagine.
Now, how would you enforce it if 40 of them go to park? Because we can't enforce that. It's private property. So that's, that's the other question. The only time it can be enforced, the sheriff can enforce it and the highway patrol can enforce it when they're on the public right of way. Trey, is that correct?
Yes.
If they're on the public right, and they're impeding traffic, they can be taken.
Yes.
I mean, but private property.
Couldn't we task the homeowners' association with the responsibility of ensuring no obstruction to public road?
Diligence in doing that.
That would be in play automatically.
It should.
Yeah.
It should be.
We, we.
Well, it's not at the public.
We're here tonight.
Yeah, well, it's not at the public boat ramp. It's called Sluke Point. Them poor folks that live along Sluke Point Road are catching it.
Yeah. So.
So my only, my only condition was the one about the upkeep of the grounds.
Yeah, well, I would definitely be in favor of that and making sure that there's no, you know, the erosion controls there and things like that. I mean, nobody wants to pollute the estuary there. I use the waterway as much as anybody in this room and I try to be a good steward of it. But if it's not being utilized and a private body wants to be able to let some limited folks utilize it, I mean, I think that should be up to them.
And I'll second that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
With the stipulation of a limited amount of 25 or less, or how, you know, not over, maybe 25.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have some language I've drafted up and I think Daniel might have some as well. We can take this one at a time. So the language I have, and feel free to provide any feedback or request any corrections, owner to ensure precautions are taken to minimize erosion and runoff and related impacts to public trust waters. Is that in line with your intention, Mr. George? Is that language satisfactory?
Sounds perfect.
And then the other condition for Commissioner Newton, owner to ensure no obstructions to traffic movements along Hughes Road.
Just for one more, just for discussion. One of the other issues we had at a previous spot was lighting. Is there lighting? I didn't think to ask, is there lighting on this? I didn't, I couldn't tell in the pictures.
There's a light, there's a light by the big, the building that's on by the interstate way there. There's lighting there and there's street lights on.
Oh, here you go.
I come in after dark and that.
The issue at the other facility I'm talking about with a special use permit is lighting bleeding over into.
A private homeowner, yeah.
So I don't know that we need to make that a condition, maybe from the future it may become a problem.
A homeowner will come and complain. I like those two, but I think that we're going to get in trouble if we start really confining it to a number. Because if you say 25 and you've got 32 people in Greystone and then the, whatever the Watch community, what's the name of the watch?
Hammock Watch.
What?
Hammock Watch.
Hammock Watch. If you've only got five in Hammock Watch and how many did we say in Greystone had 35 lots? So we're really only looking at four. I don't know why we would.
Taking into account the 23 potential in Long Point.
Well, I think Mr. Nichols was, I think the HOA and the applicant was willing to work with the community. I did think that.
Yeah, and I think it was their intent to make whole Gray Watch and Hammock, Greystone and Hammock Watch. So, you know, whatever limitations they want to put on it, I would certainly say that that would be the folks that should be allowed access. If that's what I heard. So.
So now, you're trying to get, Mr. Burton, would you like to restate that motion, approve all that?
Well, yeah, I'll just, I'll restate the motion to put forward with the stipulations that staff has added.
He's got a, yeah, he's coming up with a.
And Mr. Burton, you would, you could also say the conditions, the standard special use permit conditions in addition.
I still I'd hate to see 100 people getting access. You know what I mean? I'd still like to see something with.
Listen, do you have that correct? You have the limit?
I do, I have limited to 25 written down.
Okay.
But we can certainly workshop that now if you'd like.
I would be good with that.
So limited to 25 users external to the?
That the applicant has agreed to publicly.
Right. So.
But are we talking about 25 users from Greystone and Hammock? Are we talking about we're going to allow people from Maggity to Burnoff? What are we talking about?
So just to, so I just want to clarify something to that point. So in terms of the use of the proposed use here and the continued use here as a community boating facility, so it has to be within the purview of that collective owners group, which we have the memorandum of understanding for those two communities. So we could say limited to 25 within those two communities, in addition to Long Point.
That sounds fine with me.
I just don't think it's fair when we're so close. If there's three or four more that wanted access from Gray Rock.
You've got to start somewhere, I think.
Yeah. If they're satisfied with that, the applicant's satisfied with 25, then then that's it.
I think we've closed that parking lot.
Is a homeowner, applicant, he wanted to speak to the numbers?
We're in the middle of it, but we have a motion on the table. So we've already started that.
All right. So are we restating the motion?
He's, I think, he's restated it.
I've restated it as staff has written and he's got it in there for the 25.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
I'll second.
If there's a favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
I'm surprised you're still here.
Thank you, everyone.
It passes.
So real quick, I got an email while we were in closed session that people are getting their, and this will become a big issue. You haven't been through this yet, but it's going to fix it. People are getting their solid waist led with their new Snickers in there and they're calling the tax office and the tax office has sent them to utilities and utilities has sent them to Susan. And Susan's telling them they all got to go to, or somebody's telling them they all got to go to Hampstead to get them. So we went through this last year. It was a nightmare with Snickers. It was terrible.